Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for being here. This is our first school board meeting of the 23-24 school year. We're off to a fabulous start. I want to go ahead and get this meeting, this work session started. Can I get a motion to accept the personnel report?
I move that we accept the personnel report.
I second.
Gabriel and Bassin. Okay. You ready? Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Thank you all. Passes. Up next, we have our school board norms and protocol tasks. Mr. Jordan, would you like to begin the discussion?
Uh, I think so. Trying to make sure I'm still connected. Well, in any event, I know we list as norms and protocols and tasks. What we really said, we wanted to give additional attention is the continuation of the discussion of the board goals and conversation around superintendent's recommended interim goals. So, like, if we can kind of walk through that and also just ask for indulgence, because I know we have a lot of things on the agenda, but I don't know how long this may take. So, if as we're moving forward, if there's something else on the agenda, oh, it looks like, okay, maybe at one point I thought I saw policies on here, so maybe that's not here anymore.
We did, we did have policies. We do have policies.
Is it still there? Oh, okay.
But you know, Dr. Holm, we're doing about five minutes.
Yeah, they're, they're, it's-
Don't set as long of expectations.
Well, I just want to, if, what I was going to say is if there's something that we have to review today that we need to vote on the, on the 20th-
No, this is the first reading.
Okay, then let's make sure we do that. Otherwise, we'll, we'll see how it goes. So, we left the last meeting. The board had worked on our proposed goals and we had a couple that were, fill in the blank, if you will. So, if you pull up, not that document that's on the screen, but the, what's it listed on here?
The color one.
That one, yes.
Goals summary?
Yes.
Document?
This one, here we go.
Yeah, there it is.
So, we, we left with the, the five goals. Obviously, the first one is dealing with the, the number of schools that we have accredited, or the percentage of the schools that we have accredited. The second addresses the percentage of students reading on or above grade level by the end of third grade as measured by the reading SOL test. Will increase from 45% school year 2021 to 65% school year 26-27. Goal three deals with the black students' reading proficiency rate. Just as a reminder, there is a difference between goal two that focuses on third grade and goal three that focuses on reading at all appropriate grade levels. Then we have goal four, which is dealing with the subgroup piece. And we said we wanted to make sure that we can leave today's meeting with clarity and agreement for, for that goal. And then also for goal five, which we still may not have the appropriate information that we need, but that's one of the things we need to just make sure we have clarity around what the starting point may be for C.C.R.I. And if we are unable to fill in those variables by the 20th, then just being clear on when we would be able to, to do that. So, at first, just want to kind of start there with the board goals piece to see if there's any additional feedback, whether it's from Dr. Birdsong and administration or from board members in terms of our goals, particularly with the adjustments we made with goal four and the adjustment that we made to make sure that we clarified on or above grade level by the end of third grade. Those were the, the main adjustments that we made at, at the high level. Comments, questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Clanton.
So, goal two, where we have that to 65%, 26-27. Because I went back to the motion I made down there. That was one I thought that we were sending back, right? And that's, yeah. So, even though it's down there, I guess, does Dr. Birdsong have the recommendation on what that one should look like?
So, you should have-
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
That document has the updated data points. From 65 to 75.
Seventy-five.
Oh, that's right.
Which is- The state benchmark, right?
So- But just for clarity, then, goal two, the end percentage is 75%.
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I want to ensure that the board has an opportunity to, to read over the goals. I did not change any of the substance of the goals, but we did wordsmith some of the goals. So, I want to make sure that you're comfortable with that, just to make them a little more clear. And so, I don't know if you want me to go through each one or if you have specific questions about one. I'm happy to answer or I'm happy to walk you through the document.
Anyone have a question that's not about wordsmithing? Go ahead.
Well, not so much about word, wordsmithing. I think goal one's pretty clear, but I think we talked about two, I think you clarified, but especially goal four. We talked about, that one's not about wordsmithing, but about being clear on how we're defining the achievement gaps particularly. So, I do want to talk about that goal in particular. So, because I did see the language that you provided in, in your goals in your, what you provided compared to what we talked about last, last time we were here. So, if you could address that one in particular, that would be helpful.
Okay, so with goal four-
Before you go, I just want to make sure we're, we're on the same page. So, the board has had a graph goal of the percentage of students in each subgroup in gate, in grades three through eight. Right?
Right, correct.
And then, so Dr. Birdsong, what you are about ready to suggest is that we consider modifying the language?
Yes.
Okay.
To include all students who are tested in that area.
So, I, I, yeah, so I want to hear her, you know, the ra, the rationale you have. And, and not only for that, we also asked, we also asked you to consider the 5% and if that was realistic. And, and, but I also, you know, just if you could speak to that as well, so.
Absolutely. So, as, let me start with the 5%. So, I think we were being a little more aggressive than what we think you said. For example, if you're, if you are asking us to increase each of the subgroup's scores by 5% annually until, what was it, school year 2028, that accreditation year? So, if you took like 5%, for example, of 52, 5% of 52 is like 2.6%, okay? So, we didn't know, we didn't clearly understand if you meant 5% of where we are and moving 5% forward or five percentage points. So, five percentage points is much more aggressive than what you said. So, in thinking about what the board, the direction they gave to us or the direction you gave to us, we just thought that it could be possible. We wanted to set a higher goal than the 5% of what you offered. And so, we just increased it to five percentage points. So, for example, if we were at 52%, then we would increase that annually by 5%, which would be from 52 to 57 instead of from 52 to 54.6 or 52.6.
Right. But did you, did you, so the part that, I guess, I want to make clear or that I hope that we all have a shared understanding, including the board, is that is as compared to any increases seen compared to the comparison group. So, if, let's, let's say, you know, we compare traditionally, the white subgroup is, or the black subgroup is compared to the white subgroup. So, if the white subgroup is also increasing five percentage points, right? Like, if we're talking about percentage points and the black subgroup is increasing by five percentage points, what I'm asking for is that the black subgroup is increasing five percentage points higher than the black, I mean, the white subgroup. Do you see what I mean? So, it's, that gap is closing even more greatly. So, that's why I said 5%, not by percentage points.
Okay. So, that's a, that's a- Realistically, and I'm just thinking out loud based upon what you just said, so if, if the black, if the white subgroup, for example, if they were at 90%, and, for example, the black subgroup is at 50, you're expecting the black subgroup to be at 95 the next year?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying-
Okay, that's why I'm asking clarifying questions.
I'm saying that they are, that they are improving at a greater rate than the white subgroup. Or our students with disabilities are improving at a greater rate than our students without disabilities. Or our English language learners are improving at a greater rate than our English-speaking students. Do you see what I mean? So, they're increasing at a greater rate. So, it's against the comparison group, not, not just that they're improving at a rate. It is against the comparison group.
So, we had difficulty with who is the comparison group?
Well, that's why I spelled it out in the, in the goal, I spelled it out and made it clear.
We were asked to go back and look at it and, and provide a recommendation, and we didn't think that was appropriate to put one group of children against the next group of children. We talked a little bit about how the state even looks at it. They, they look at gap groups in terms of if the group is meeting, meeting the benchmark or not. And so, it's not Asian children versus white children or, you know, multi-race children against white children. It's all about are the children meeting the benchmark? And if they're not, how much do they need to improve to meet the benchmark? So, I, I still don't quite understand the thinking behind putting one group of kids against another.
Certainly. That's how, that's how the VDOE calls the gap group.
Right.
And that's what they're calling the gap group. But in mu, in most research, academic research, they're, they are indeed comparing groups against each other. So, that's where the gaps lie. So, that's-
We're relying on the VDOE as our experts because we, you know, our data are normalized.
Even when they look at it and when we look at it, we look at and we calculate the gap. You know, we can see the gap when we look at the data. We can see, you know, our, our black students are achieving at, you know, 34%. Well, well, here, we don't have white students on, on this particular sheet, but if we were to compare against, you know, our Hispanic stu, or our students with disabilities at 59%, you know, we can calculate the difference, right? So, that's, we are comparing against different groups, subgroups of students. But, so I don't really understand that. But that's what this, that's what this, and that's what we're, that's what we're essentially doing when we have subgroup data on there, is we are always comparing students against each other. But if this is something the board does not want to compare students or do subgroup analysis or anything, you know, that's up, that's, that's something I personally think is important. But if the board or the administration doesn't think is important, we can have that discussion. But that's what it says here. And I think what we asked the administration to look at was specifically, what was highlighted was the 5% because the board goals rest with the board, right? And so, we asked for, you know, we asked the administration to tell us whether 5% was realistic and for any further input, and I appreciate your input. But, you know, I, I'd like to open it up for my board colleagues to-
Mr. Clanton and then Dr. Gabriel and then Mr. Jordan.
I know you had your hand up.
I hear exactly what you're saying, and I don't disagree. I think the, the thing that I look at it when I hear this, particularly on the subgroups, is that it informs the board about what we may need to do when it comes to resources or other actions that we need to take. It's an equity.
Equity.
It's an equity thing. And that's where I really see this particular goal here, is that, okay, we're talking about not equality, but equity, where we need to move resources to target those particular groups to ensure that they have the necessary resources so that they can catch up and we can close the gaps around that, which also goes back to the larger discussion that we said and while we identified. We look at the population of Norfolk Public Schools just mathematically. You know, if we target that particular group or any of those groups that are falling behind and we put the necessary resources, if they're increasing, then they're increasing at a dramatic rate, the entire division in itself across many different spectrums will be able to, to see that same growth. So, I see what you're saying in that one, and I agree that there still needs to be something there because it comes back toward the board, where ultimately we have, which is to ensure that the resources are where they need to be and that we ultimately meet all the goals that we've established. So, I agree.
Dr. Gabriel?
I'm trying to, I see both perspectives. And I, I understand what Ms. Bassin is, is getting at with regards to the comparison groups. And Mr. Clanton, it, it does come down to an equity issue when, when we're talking about are there, are there glaring inequities that we see in the data reports? But I also completely understand where Dr. Birdsong is coming from with regards to putting student groups against other student groups. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that every child, no matter their background, no matter what subgroup they're in, they're proficient and then beyond proficient. And so, for me, that's the goal that I have. But when you dig deeper and we look within our own organization and we see that, for whatever reason, certain subgroups are outpacing other subgroups or we have a glaring difference between, for example, students with disabilities as compared to what the state rate is, then that's where the deeper dive comes in for budget analysis and resource allocation. But for me, for the broad goal board setting, I would support the superintendent's recommendation with, let's get all kids on the level of proficiency. And then, as we have our deeper conversations, if we want to have a, a further discussion on maybe some of the interim goals, then that can be placed within an interim goal. But for right now, I, I do want us to be broad in the sense of getting them to those levels of proficiency.
So, what I'm hearing is another way of saying that is making the, the benchmark, the, the pass rate, the floor, right? So, we get all of, all of the children above the pass rate?
So, if, I think, I think there's, I think we're having cross communication. So, so the, the goal that the board agreed to when we had the discussion and agreed to the goal, we acknowledged that this goal and the comparison that we're doing around subgroups is this board's goal that we're setting. We also acknowledged what the state is doing around its work around gap groups, which will come out anyway as part of what the state reports. This is about what the board is, this board is prioritizing in terms of what it is that we would like to see in terms of the, I don't know how you want to say it, the scores, the rate of achievement based upon the, the subgroup. So, the board's position was, yes, we were willing to have that comparison. We were, whether we want to acknowledge it or not, it is the case that often it is the white subgroup that is used. And so, we were willing to have that conversation. We were willing to put forward the goal of trying to see the, the subgroup's rate of improvement exceed that of whatever the white rate of improvement is, hopefully improvement. And, and then the question was whether or not 5% then is reasonable within that, within that context. So, that's where we were. And I, I think that we need to kind of make a determination, are we sticking with that? I think the conversation around what the state is doing in the larger piece, I think that will come out through the, the state's quality school profiles and all the stuff that we look at versus what the board is trying to say to the administration, this what we want to see accomplished. You then tell us in those interim steps what it would take to, to get there. The other piece I would add to that is even as we're talking about resources and so forth, we're setting the goal. The superintendent is going, and the administration is going to set the interim goals. And then, the superintendent and administration will make recommendations to us as to resources and any other tactics or inputs that may be necessary in order to achieve what we're trying to achieve over time. So, I just wanted to put that out there before we find ourselves going down a completely different path. So, I guess the first question is, are we still clear about what Dr. Birdsong has brought back to us again? That we are comparing subgroup performance against, group performance against group performance? And we need to have a determination whether or not 5% is reasonable as we, as we go down that, go down that path. So, I guess the question would go back as to whether or not 5% is reasonable or not.
Yeah, and as it's defined in the goal.
As it's defined in the goal.
So, when I'm sitting here reading-
Not as percentage points, but as-
No, 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 I'm with you on that one. I'm just, so what we have here from Dr. Birdsong, is this Dr. Birdsong's superintendent goal? Because I'm reading school board and-
Well, that's why I was, I was not trying to get there yet. What, if you look at what Dr. Birdsong has given us for goal four is a rewrite or modification of the board goal that we, that we had.
Correct.
So, if, if we say to Dr. Birdsong, we want to keep what we have, then we would ask her to go back and make any adjustments that she feels she needs to make in order to provide us with interim goals to, to get there.
I'm fine with the goal as it is in green, but the 5%.
5%?
5%.
But are you, are you, are you reaffirming?
Yeah, I'm fine with what's in green.
What we have, what we have previously agreed to?
Yes.
Okay.
And help me understand why we're not choosing five percentage points?
No, we are.
We are.
Five percentage points, okay.
No, not percentage points.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
We're, we, the only thing we asked of goal four is that if 5% is realistic or not. That's what we asked the administration to come back and tell us about goal four. And so, that's, that's what we're, that's what it sounds like we're still-
That's what we are right now.
That's what we're still waiting, you know, we still need an answer to.
And to be clear, my takeaway from the meeting as well as the administration was not only to look at the 5%, but the goal generally. And so, that's what we did. And I was asked to bring back a recommendation, not based on perhaps the same wording, but what we thought would be most appropriate. And so, that's what we did.
And that is what this modify is?
And that's what you have right here.
Right here.
That's right. So, that was my takeaway. It wasn't just to look at the 5%, but it was to review it as a team of educators and come back with a recommendation.
Yes. No, I, I, I think that's clear.
Okay.
I just think right now, pending where we are, is, I don't, I think we are having a discussion as to whether or not we will stick with what we have or accept the, the, the change.
And if you decide to stick with what you have, I'll need clarification around, around exactly like the groups you want us to compare. Like blacks versus whites, Asians versus, we would need that clarification.
Okay, yeah.
So, the five percentage points is more aggressive?
Pardon me?
It is.
The five percentage points is more aggressive, why wouldn't he not?
Not, not if you're-
Not necessarily.
It's, it's not more aggressive if you are, if you have a comparison group. If you have a comparison group, the way I have written it is much more aggressive.
So, can I?
And, and I'll tell you something. So, this is a question, and it's kind of like, so the way the state has it, the way the percentage points, so that's the way we've kind of been doing business when we talk about achievement gaps for years and years and years, right? That's the way we've looked at achievement gap data, right? And have we made a dent in it? I'm just asking, have we?
Across the board?
Yeah.
No?
No, right? What's the answer? Like, I'm asking anybody in the room, what's the answer? We haven't made a dent in it.
Nationally, no. Statewide, no.
No, I'm just saying, no, statewide, I'm, anywhere, we haven't. And this board and this, this administration, I know, wants to be bold, wants to be courageous, wants to do, wants to be different, wants to put this district on the map for every student, right? Yes.
Yes.
Right?
Yep, yes.
So, we're not doing what the state is going to do. We're not doing what everybody else in the nation is doing when it comes to achievement gap.
As a board priority.
As a board priority. We are doing what we know is going to get us real progress. And if that is our priority, then we need to monitor the data as if it's really our priority. So, if we're going to monitor the data as if it's really our priority, we've got to monitor it differently and aggressively. And I say, we don't monitor it the same way. If we monitor it the same way and do it the same way, we're going to get the same results.
As a, as a, as a, as a board priority. So, it does not mean that it will not get reported elsewhere.
Right.
But in terms of what the board is setting as a goal and what the board wants to monitor within the cycle throughout the year, this is what we say we, we want to give our attention and focus to. It doesn't mean that on other reports, this may not get reported out, but it won't get reported out as part of what we are prioritizing as a, whatever it is, three to five-year goal and what we're going to be looking to monitor progress against monthly, quarterly, or whatever it is that our calendar is in terms of our progress annually towards reaching this goal over this three to five-year period.
My concern is, though, we are also working toward more consistent data and consistent reporting. So, now we're saying, no, we want this reported differently.
No.
Well, I'm talking about, that's not what I, that's not what I'm saying.
That's what we'd be looking at.
I'm talking about, that, that's consistently reported to us. I'm talking about report, looking, getting different data than what we've been doing. I'm talking about doing things differently, but consistently doing it every month as it's reported to us. That's two different things. I'm talking about, we are all committing and have been- That's two different things. I'm talking about, we are all committing and have been can, have been saying it, but doing it is, is one thing. We are saying, we want to be bold, we want to be courageous. We all want to put Norfolk Public Schools on the map. Let's do it together and be committed toward, toward it. And in order to do that, we cannot just do the same thing the state is doing and doing the same thing we've been doing for decades in terms of looking at achievement gap data. We have to do it differently and do it more scientifically, do it more thoughtfully and logically and, you know, and that's what I'm trying to, to get at. And yes, I, I'm not an educator, but I know how to look at data. And this is, I think, more aggressive. I think we're making it a priority. I think I think we're on the right track.
I have a question. I, I have to have it, I, I have to have the example kind of laid out. Because we're there, but it's all in the implementation, right? It's all in the review of the data. So I think we need to walk through an example of what that looks like. So for, so we have the charts that Dr. Birdsong has brought back to us for, for goal four. This is the, this information, this chart right here is the pass rates for, let's say, English. So we have, for example, in reading, the benchmark is at 75%. So this past year, for black students, they're at 50%, 50% pass rate. And if you compare them to white, that's 79%. So if we take those-
Paul, what, what are you looking at?
So this is, this is this report.
I'm trying to figure out what you-
Do you have that? Can you share what that document is so we can all-
It's the MPS Division Level SOL Annual Pass Rates.
From which, which meeting?
Last meeting.
It was the document that I provided to you when I gave you data. What date was that? June, June.
It was June.
June.
I'm sorry, but this is the-
No, no, it's, it's fine. We just need to get it so we all can see it.
But that's something that I think when we say, can they come back and say, okay, this is what it would look like. This is what it would look like. That's what I think we can ask the administration to show us and walk us through.
So, but let, I'd say, let's do it now. Let's, let's talk about it right now.
First of all, let's be clear.
I know, we're going to bring it up.
Say what the title of it is.
You don't have it? Okay.
Hold on, we, we can get it. What's the, what's the, what's the title?
MPS Division Level SOL Annual Pass Rates.
And what meeting was that?
I call it the Lauren chart.
Evaluation session.
That's why she doesn't have it. That's what I'm saying, she doesn't have it. This is, okay.
Yes.
Okay, but now-
Have hard copies now.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, okay, but either, but either way.
The data you're reporting is not, is, is, is not confidential data, right?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's not confidential.
So can you, can you just describe, I think what you're trying to do is to get an example so you understand the difference.
So we understand the differences because one's talking 5%, one's talking five percentage points. And so this is what we need to walk through. So if we, if we have, for example, this past year, we have our black students at 50% pass rate. And then we have our white students at 79% pass rate. This is for reading. The benchmark is at 75. If we, if we go through this chart in particular, and Dr. Birdsong, you can-
You're looking at English, you're not looking at reading.
Okay, well.
So the reading for, for white children, for example, would have been 80, 81%. And black children at 52%.
Okay, that must be a little adjusted then. But either way.
No, it's the second chart. You're looking at the first chart probably.
Yeah, I went, I went down, but this is for grade three. This is not for, for all students. But either way, I'm just saying. Regardless of the information, if we have a 50 percentage point for black students and if we have a 79 percentage point for white students, walk us, walk us through what it would mean in order to monitor the progress for what we mean when we say we want to close achievement gaps. This is for English.
Who's the question for?
It's, 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 it's for, it's for Tanya, so she can-
But that's-
Yeah.
Five percentage points. If they both increase five percentage points, this is what, so that's the difference. So they're both going up at the same rate. So you, I'm, I'm just showing, so this is going to take, right?
In essence, in essence, what, what, if I understand, if if I'm walking five steps behind Mr. Clancy and we both-
Take five steps.
Uh, take additional five steps. The gap between me and him-
We want to close the gap.
Wait a minute, the gap between me and him remains the same. In order for me to close the gap, I'm going to have to walk more steps than he does amongst the same time period in order for me to close the gap.
Right, right.
So what, I think the conversation we're trying to have, what, what we had was an effort to try to say that we want to see the performance of black SWD, SES, so forth, students that their pace-
Is accelerated.
Is accelerated above and beyond
Right.
the group that they're being compared to so that you see gaps close. Not that you just see everybody increased by 5%.
Because then you're not closing, closing a gap.
So Rodney would have to walk at a speed faster than Carlos.
Right, so, okay, so that's the, that's the vantage point that
That's what we have on the-
That's what we have up here. So then to Dr. Birdsong, you, do you understand what they're saying as far as that perspective?
And it doesn't mean you're taking anything away from Carlos. It just means that-
Rodney needs to have the resources of Rodney. And have her explain that the 5%, because I'm, I'm still not clear with that. What you mean, between five percentage points and five points with each of the subgroups that you're comparing.
As compared to, because what you have is just five percentage points, right?
Right.
But I'm talking about compared to the comparison group. Like you don't have, in your example, isn't compared to, over, as compared to the comparison group. Correct? Like you just have it in, in, within that comparison group. It's just, you just added the five percentage points.
I'm trying to understand what you're trying to get us to do.
Like, where is her?
So while she's doing, what, what we're trying to do is just set a goal. And then what we would like for you to come back and tell us what you would have to do in order to see us reach that goal over time.
But, but I need to understand what the goal means, what, what you're trying to achieve. What is it? Five percentage points, five points? Black children versus whatever subgroup? All of that. That would clear it up for me so that the next time we bring you something is exactly knowing this time it's not for us to go back and make a recommendation, but to go back and do what you need us to do.
So in my mind, I just keep thinking, you know, five, uh, 5% of 10 is two, so you'd get from 10 to 12 instead of 10 to 15. Am I thinking this like wrong?
There's a difference between, you're right, 5% and 5 percentage points.
The five percentage points is more aggressive than percent. So instead of increasing by two, if they're saying they can increase by five, I want to see them increase by five. So that's where I go back to the five percentage points being-
But it depends on your comparison group, which I don't, I don't see it on here. That's why I'm like-
I thought we were just simply trying to say that if-
Made up numbers.
Yeah, I guess on the example that was just given, I guess kind of pivoted back to Dr. Birdsong. If the goal in essence is-
Wait a minute, hold on, hold on.
It's not matching.
Forget, let's talk concept for a minute.
I mean, I'm listening here in respect. So the goal is they're at different points. We want every student to still progress, but this student or this, so whatever group may be needs to be at a faster rate. How would you word that? How, how would you, if that's what the board wants to do, because clearly you're saying that you don't understand the way we're framing it. How would you frame that in order for us to reach what we're saying we want to get done?
So you're putting me on the spot? What I thought was-
No, 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 I'm, we're having a discussion. I'm just saying.
I don't, I'm not sure how I would word it.
Okay. But do you understand in the respect of what we're saying, at least in the concept of we're trying to close gaps while we're-
You're trying to accelerate. I, I just need to again, understand how you want that to look.
And when, the reason why I put it that way is because maybe 5% isn't the right thing.
Well, that-
And so what I'm saying is, is that if we at least understand the concept of what we're trying to get to, then we could probably get to an agreeance that, hey, we want to close gap while we're still, students are still achieving. And then we send it back to everyone, because I don't think that we're going to fix that in this conversation piece here. That's why I wanted to make sure that you at least understood where the board was trying to get to. Not to put you on the spot that you got to do it right now, but that we at least get some agreeance that maybe it needs to be wordsmithed a little bit better. I know you came back with something different.
So that's why I want to be very clear from the board right now. So we're not like wasting time because, you know, the school, the school year has already started. We really want to do a good job with these goals. We don't want to second guess. We don't want to bring back a recommendation. We really want to hear what it is that you want us to do since it is a school board goal. We're just trying to get an understanding of, of what that means.
Yeah.
I still haven't, I haven't heard that.
So can I ask you a question this way then? Cause you, cause we have examples in the parentheses.
Yes.
Right.
Are the examples in the parentheses, are they the, we have, for example, do they need to change from, for example, to specific? Is that what we want to compare? Black students to white students, students with disabilities, students without disability, economically disadvantaged to non-economically disadvantaged, English language learner to non-English language learner, or is it something different?
Right.
Are those, is that what we want to have as specific comparisons?
Well, so I mean, when I, when I first, like, cause you know, I talked it out with Rodney to, to help me be more clear. And it was a good conversation.
Cause I had the same questions that you had.
Cause, cause you know, he helped me, so which is why I was specific here. And I thought I was being clear, right? So-
Well, we need to, we want you to be clear again, so.
So these are the standard, traditional comparison groups.
Right, so we're not going to compare, we're not going to compare students with disabilities to white students. We're not going to compare
Right.
Hispanic students to, are we comparing Hispanic students to a group?
That was a question I wrote down too. Who are we comparing?
To non-Hispanic students.
Okay, so we're going to compare, so we're going to compare black to white, but not black to non-black. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, we're going to compare students with disabilities and students without disabilities.
Correct.
We're going to compare economically disadvantaged to non-economically disadvantaged. We're going to compare English language learners to non-English language learners.
Correct.
We're going to compare Hispanic to non-Hispanic.
Correct, which is, is, that's not on here, but yeah.
It was not on here yet. And then, uh, I guess the other group that we don't have, we don't have Asians listed.
And I have a question about that. If we're comparing our, our black subgroup against the white subgroup, the, the Asian subgroup is outperforming the white subgroup. So why have we chosen the white subgroup to make that comparison?
I guess one reason is because of the small percentage of
Right.
Of Asian, Asian population.
Less than 2%. We have 1.8% of the population.
We had a similar conversation, because you know, I would argue we should be comparing the white subgroup to the Asian subgroup. We want to be-
Which is why we're having this conversation.
Right, because we've, we've gone back, but there's such a small percentage of our student population.
That they're still outperforming.
They are high performing.
But as of now.
But they also fall into other categories.
But I just, just, just what we have on using the subgroups as they're listed on the chart that Dr. Birdsong has, do we add an Asian subgroup? And if so, do we compare the Asian subgroup to vice versa?
Can we say black to non-black since, since we're kind of being, that would make it consistent with the other, you know, students with disabilities compared to non-disabled peers, economically disadvantaged to non-economically disadvantaged.
Yeah, but like I said, I was using traditional
Comparison groups.
Comparison groups that are traditionally used in research. So I was trying to be consistent in what is traditionally used and not trying to make up, make up categories.
Done the same thing we've done before.
But we haven't done that.
We haven't, we haven't done this. So I was trying to be, we haven't done, yeah.
For the, for the sake of where we are and to be able to give the response back to Dr. Birdsong, do our, what we have in the parentheses, do we need to add anything additional from the recommendation that you brought forward that the board came to agreement around? Or is it just those in the, in the parentheses?
Well, the one thing I would add was, would be Hispanic to non-Hispanic.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the comparison groups on the table would be black to whites, black to white, students with disabilities, students without disabilities, economically disadvantaged to non-economically disadvantaged, English language learner to non-English language learner, and Hispanic to non-Hispanic.
Correct.
Just add an additional one.
You could include Asian to-
Or say could, either.
Or add, add Asian.
Or don't give it to us.
You could add Asian to non, non-Asian, or to white, or to white.
That's what's-
I don't even know what group, I mean, people are looking at.
Well, I'm going to channel, I'm going to channel Lauren here, Ms. Campson, for a second, because this is where she, you know, really hammered, hammered us on focus on-
You do Asian to white, yeah.
But is that, is that necessary? Or are we, are we losing track of where the focus is? The focus is on some very high priority particular groups. So what would we be doing
Right.
at a board level on focusing on that? So if we're going to focus on the focus, then it would be our African-American students, our students with disabilities, our L students, and socially economic disadvantaged. That, those are the high priority areas.
And the, and the Hispanic to non-Hispanic.
Is, is that, okay, then-
That is our growing population.
Then, then you put that one in there. And that's where I would leave it.
And done with it?
Done.
That's why I, yeah.
So then, the, then the proposal then is to modify the goal and change the, for example, to this is, as compared to respective comparison groups. And then list black to white, students with disabilities to students without disabilities, economically disadvantaged to non-economically disadvantaged, English language learner to non-English language learner, Hispanic to non-Hispanic. Those are the groups. So it would not be, for example, it would be, that's it.
That's those specific.
So I'm going to, I'm going to go out there and say for those who don't understand education speak and why we do these groups, why aren't we just comparing those who are performing below the benchmark versus those who aren't?
We, we do in other areas.
Why aren't we, you know, speaking about the data in that way?
I'm not, I'm not understanding you. We, we are, we are prioritizing. Well, we-
Well, this is what we said we were going to prioritize.
The, the data, we, we are considering our demographics as a school division. We are considering where we can make impact. And, uh, and we are not shying away from, uh, the gaps. And if you notice, we removed the language of student achievement gaps because whether they're opportunity gaps, we, we took that language out. So it just simply says that what we are establishing as a goal is this is the performance that we would like to see. And then let's say, for example, we're looking at, I don't know, whatever interim report or whatever it is that the school division may be looking at in terms of how they're keeping score on this, uh, that's what would show up in the interim. Right? Because the SOL test we know is at the end. There are assessments that take place throughout the year or whatever other means by which data is reported. And so when we're monitoring, and that's where the interim piece will come back, we'll end up monitoring what is recommended from the administration for us to be able to see how our students are performing throughout the year towards that, towards that- um, towards that, towards that end goal, towards the end of the cycle. So.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not, we, this is absolutely not losing track of all of our students and the high achievement that we have as far as expectation for all of our students. What this is, is a deep dive into the data and the data shows gaps with some very high priority populations. And if we don't focus attention on those gaps, then we are not going to get our schools, number one, accredited. And number two, we're not going to do a service for these students who we serve in this division. And so what this is, is a heightened focus and attention to these areas. Not to say that we're not paying attention to the other things, but just to say this group needs our, our attention right here and right now. In five years from now, we could be having a different conversation.
Who we are.
But right now, but right now, th- this is where, these are where the kids are that need the most help and deserve a lot of our attention. And that will come in a variety of different main, means. But what we're trying to figure out is let's set the goal and let the administration tell us how we're going to progress monitor what closing the achievement gaps look like.
Right, progress monitoring will be on the board, but the recommendations on what we will monitor will come from the administration. So just, just, just for clarity, then Dr. Birdsong, you have any questions on that?
I, I do because the five percent has still not been.
Okay, outside of the five percent, and I'm saying outside of the five percent because what we thought we were asking was.
Yeah.
Come back and give us feedback on whether or not the five percent made sense. So you still may want to go back and revisit based upon what we are saying, whether or not the five percent is, whether that makes sense or not.
Right.
Five percent, I can say right now is not, not as aggressive as five percentage points. But based on, again, how you have reworded this, and again, we're going blacks, black children and not versus, what is another word? Black children's data compared to white children's SWD versus non, or not, non-disabled children, SES versus non, L versus non, and we're adding Hispanic.
Right.
So the only other question again that I have, that I continue to have is what do you want to do with the five percent? And what, and give me an example of what that looks like so we're clear.
I thought, I mean, like you said, um, you and your team are, are all educators and think about this probably all the time. And I know our principals are thinking about it all the time, um, as well. And I think Mr. Clanton asked a great question a few minutes ago, is saying if, um, if you know you have kids that need to accelerate faster than another group of kids, how do you, you know, how would you pose, how would you pose that goal? Like, you know, our schools all have SMART goals, like how would you pose, how would you pose that goal to get, you know, um, you, you know, you need to close that achievement gap, how is that, what's that goal going to read like? What's that, um, to, to, to truly, truly close that goal? Like not just to have a goal that, have a goal, but to, to close it.
So as a former building principal, I did that and did so successfully. And so what I would say is the way this, this goal is worded now is not going to impact how these two principals conduct their daily business in their schools. Because they're going to have to make sure that they are providing each and every child the differentiated instruction that they need to be successful. So what we're trying to achieve, and I keep, I keep feeling like we're trying to skirt around my question, which I want to have a clear understanding of what it is that the board wants us to do because I want to come back and be able to give to you what you're asking for. So there won't be an evenness understandings. And again, I don't, you know, in, in, as we look at time, because we already started the school year. So I, I simply wanted that question.
Well, I think we can address it. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, then that's.
I don't think there's an intent to skirt around. I guess I would, I would ask.
Yeah.
Maybe can you describe the, as you see the, based upon what we've just discussed? So if using whatever the Dr. Gabriel was reading off, so hypothetically, if black students on, uh, whatever today's dated, September sixth.
Mm-hmm.
Were at, um, uh, fifty percent.
Yeah.
And white students were at seventy percent. And then at the end of the year, uh, white students were at eighty percent. I'm just making it up. What's the difference in the five percent versus the five percentage point? Where, where would you?
Like, show us what that looks like.
What would it be for?
So I'm asking you what that looks like because I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Well.
To me, it looked like what I provided to the board. We, again, we're looking at, we understand that we have subgroups of children who are not performing as well as other groups. And so there will be specific instructional strategies in the building that are being utilized by our classroom teachers to move children where they need to be and to give them that individualized instruction. Meanwhile, I'm responsible for all 28,000 children within the school division. That doesn't mean that I don't expect them to accelerate. I understand the concept of having the children who are underperforming to be their performance rate to accelerate. I, I totally understand that. And so again, what we brought back to you was looking at all, all children, but specifically, we, we get that, um, that we're going to have to be more aggressive with our students who are underperforming.
Maybe it's the, maybe it's the use of percentages and percentage points.
Yes.
Are you saying that, so in my made up example, uh, group B is at a seventy, group A is at a fifty. Group B at the end of the year is at eighty, so group B increased by ten points. Then I think what we were trying to say is group A would, we, the expectation is group A would increase by fifteen points.
Yeah, their acceleration would be greater.
Ten plus the five, is that correct?
Yeah.
So is that what, is that what you're also recommending or saying?
Um, I agree that the children that are underperforming, we have to accelerate their learning.
So the.
So in theory, yes, we, we do.
So it's not necessarily increased by a percent. We're saying that they would, whatever the, whatever you call this number.
Delta.
Is that number plus, plus five?
So with like, for example, white children are at eighty-one. And so the subgroup that you want us to look at is the black children who are at fifty-two. So based on what you've written here, what does that look like even for, for like next year?
So.
What does that look like?
So at five percent, they're increasing what, two point six?
Right.
At fifty-two instead of fifty-seven.
Right.
Point.
Which was also my point, that's why I'm trying to get an understanding.
So here's, here's what I think is that, is that we want, we, like I said earlier, we want to make sure that the, that all students are performing at proficient or above. So what essentially happens is the way we close that gap is to get the students who are currently not performing at proficient up to that proficiency line and then as, you know, of course, there's going to be a, an ultimate ceiling where that's where the gap, we, we start to see the motion of the gaps closing.
Right.
But that's not what, that's not what this goal is speaking to.
Well, how else are we going to close the gaps?
The, it, the question.
That's not, yeah.
The question on the table is if at the end of the year.
We're going to have to come back to this.
One group has seen its performance increase by X number of points. What is the, uh, what is the expectation for the other group? That's, that's what the conversation is, so whether that, that should be a raw score or some other means. What I was interpreting, the reason is, is Dr. Birdsong was speaking more. What I was interpreting Dr. Birdsong to say, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you put the specific points in there, it's more aggressive than if you put in there a percentage of the growth. Is that, is that correct?
I'm for the points.
Because what I'm hearing from you is that you want us to be more aggressive. And again, five percent is not as aggressive as five percentage points. So I know that might be technical to you, but to us, every point matters.
Well, I'm trying to get clarity around, because I don't even, I don't know if it's even a percentage point or not. That's what I'm trying to get clarity on. Is it, is it a percentage point or is it a raw, a raw score?
So you want, at the end of the day, you want 100% of the children to be proficient, right?
Yes, but that's, that's no question about that.
Yes.
So, so if you have a, a group that is underperforming, like we all said, and we, I think we've been saying it for the last hour or so, we want them to be.
Right.
We want to be a little more aggressive in accelerating their learning.
Of course, right.
And so, but in the meantime, we don't want the other children not to learn either. That's, that's a given. So all I'm asking is what does the board expect us to come back with?
I think this is going to be fine.
For example, if, if white children, let's use current data. Black children are at fifty-two percent, white children are at eighty-one percent. What would be the board's expectation based on five percent, five percentage points, whatever you'd like to change? I'm just asking for what that really looks like. What does that mean? I don't understand that and I still haven't heard an explanation for that. We just want to understand that so that we can work towards that without having to come back to you and it be, well, we didn't ask you to do that, we only asked you to look at this. I, I want to be very, very clear.
I have a solution.
Great.
I, I, I think. I know what's at the heart of our conversation. I think that what Dr. Birdsong is saying, if percentage points wise, we can leap faster if we go through the percentage points because if we just look at fifty-two and if we just said five percent of fifty-two, that's the two point six, but if we bump it up to five percentage points, that's fifty-seven percent. I mean, that's fifty-seven, which is the percentage of students passing the rate. And, and, and I know the variable here is, well, are they accelerating faster than the rate of their comparison group, which we have all agreed on of, of what Ms. Basine has right here? It's not a, for example, anymore, it is, this is what it is. And that's what we're going to progress monitor. Are they accelerating? And we're going to get that through the STAR data and we're going to get that through, um, yeah, the, the, the data that you have here.
Well, here we're seeing SOL data.
S, SOL, but then the.
SOL is the.
This is the SOL.
SOL is at the end of the cycle.
Okay.
The STAR or whatever else comes forward is what we would be monitoring within the cycle.
And that's, and that's the, um, that's where the interim goals.
But one thing we have to do is establish targets. And that's why I can't come back to you without targets. And if I don't have an understanding of where you want the targets to be, I, I can't formulate targets. That's why I'm, I continue to ask for that clarity.
And right now, I think, you know, we, we of course want, again, we'll say, say that we want all of our students to continue to succeed at the rate that they are capable of. But we really do need to monitor, you know, we, the ones who aren't at the proficiency level yet. Again, that has to be the benchmark to get everyone past. That is the.
We, though, I, I appreciate that. I guess when we, when we start talking about the proficiency piece, I just think it adds a different perspective. The question, whether it's, whether somebody is above proficiency, below proficiency, at proficiency, I think the intent is, is to see growth and accelerated growth.
Right.
But I think when we start having the conversation around proficiency.
At least, at minimum.
There, there's a, there are other goals, there's, there's other stuff that's dealing with proficiency.
Right.
So that's why this one doesn't.
It can both be true at the same time.
Hey, can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
So we were having discussion, Dr. Birdsong wanted to be clear on five percentage. Are we, can we all agree that we want to see five percentage points? Is that what we're?
Is anyone not in agreement with the percentage points? Okay, thank you.
Five percentage points.
Yes.
Well, that's the question I asked, so.
Right, we all agree.
So we're saying five percentage points is what the superintendent is asking.
Five percentage points of, for example, white children at eighty-one percent. You want, you want black children to be where? For example, next year.
Want it to be, uh.
Fifty, fifty-two right now. That's five percentage points.
That's five percentage.
Yeah, that's the fifty-seven.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the chart that we gave.
As opposed to, as opposed to a five percent growth, which would be two point six.
Right.
Which is why we didn't do two point six.
That's right.
We did five percentage points.
That's right.
Because it was not as aggressive as the.
That's.
And, and, and.
That's exactly right.
And as, as you have on the back, the monitoring piece, that's how we're going to, we're going to have to see the comparison groups. That's the only modification that's going to have to be made, is we're going to have to see the comparison groups.
Right, where they are in terms of their achievement level.
Yes, and then, and then we'll see how that acceleration is, is pacing.
Rodney over here shaking his head.
See, and I, that's why I keep asking, because I knew that's not.
So, just, just, just using the chart, I, I would offer what we're saying is, is that, is that every group, every group would see a increase of a minimum of a five percent increase. That's what this is, that every group.
Percentage points.
Yeah, every group, I'm sorry, every group would see at minimum a five percent, a five percentage point increase, right? So you said.
That's what I.
Black would, right, we're not done yet. So, so if black goes from forty-one to forty-six, SWD, all of them are seeing a minimum of a five percent increase. Okay? In addition to, if the, uh, the black group in comparison, let's just say the, the white group was flat, then you would, right, so if they were at eighty-one now and eighty-one at the end, the black group would have had five percent greater than zero, five percentage points higher than the zero, right? Because the white group would have been flat.
Right.
If the white group went by five percentage points, then the expectation for the black group was that it would be ten, is what we were trying to say.
Yeah.
So you've got the five, you've got the five that the white group achieved. And then we were saying, we want to see the black group grow five something higher than that, which if we use percentage points would be ten. If the, if the students with disabilities, uh, if, if, if students without disabilities uh, saw a growth of five or ten, then expectation is, is that the students with disabilities will have the minimum of the five that you have plus the delta between the non-students with disabilities and the students with disabilities. We were trying to, so I think we can, we are accepting your five percent minimum, but are also trying to encourage or recommend a, a phase beyond that for the comparison group or for the subgroup.
And, and we weren't thinking this was as high as you could go. You could have suggested even higher than the five percent.
We did suggest higher than five percent.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll.
You could go, so anyway.
So I'm back to.
So, so here, here's, just, just for clarity.
You already did five percentage.
You're, you don't, you're, you're, you've recommended at minimum five percentage points. And you're, and you're asking if the board wants to, um, see something beyond that, we come back and tell you what that is.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because this is what we believe this is aggressive.
Okay.
Yeah, you tell us what that number is.
It's definitely more aggressive than the five percent, um.
Well.
Yes, we believe it's aggressive.
We, we, we.
It hasn't been done, but that doesn't mean it won't be done.
And that's true, it hasn't been done.
Hasn't been done, but it doesn't mean it won't be done.
If, if we can do it now.
So tell us.
So this is, this is.
Wait a minute, y'all saying, y'all not saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Saying she could be more aggressive.
No.
Is that what?
Dr. Birdsong said their recommendation is aggressive.
It is.
What the, what Dr. Birdsong is saying back to us is if we're trying to be more aggressive, we need to come back and say what that is. Dr. Birdsong on her chart.
Five percent.
If you want more than five percent.
More than five percentage points is what you used, right?
Right, we didn't use five percent. We, we were more aggressive, we used five percentage points.
Understand?
I understand, but I'm also trying to also, I, see, I have high expectations, but I also want to be realistic.
It has to be.
And so.
Why don't we start at five percentage points? And then if we feel like we are able to do more, then next year we change it.
Wait a minute, wait, wait.
No?
We, we just need to be clear because. We, we just need to be clear, because what we...
Oh, I hear it.
What we have in terms of 5 percentage points, the conversation we were having is, how does that address the acceleration piece? It closes the gap.
Does 5 percentage points is higher than 5%?
If everybody is at 5 percentage points, it doesn't close the gap. But it is aggressive in terms of seeing...
It is very aggressive.
But it is aggressive in terms of seeing 5% percentage point growth by each, by each...
The only way we're gonna, the, the only...
Yeah, I, I see that.
That's not what we intended.
And I've been doodling over here. So, I look at the reading SOL, you know, 26, 27, um, school year and the targets. You got 72% black, um, students with disability, 50%, um, SES, 72, 43% EL, and 76 Hispanic. I guess when I'm looking at this is that, are these targets going to connect back to what you have down here? It's full accreditation at the same year at 100%?
Yes.
So if the things that we're putting in these other groups, again, because that's where my whole focus is, I mean, not just putting numbers out here, but it's going to raise the tide on everything. And if we say we want 100% school accreditation, and all these other things, so the numbers that you have here is aggressive enough to ensure that we get goal 1, full accreditation with our student... No, 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 hold on, I know we're gonna go on Rodney, but I'm, that's my next piece. Because I'm like, I can agree with 5, saying that, you know, 5 percentage points is aggressive, but is it aggressive enough to do what we need to do when I start looking at English language learners and students with disabilities and these other groups, which is, I think, the other piece that we're talking about, that they're so far behind, which then goes into a whole nother conversation now I can get into yet, which gets into the old equity piece, um, when the recommendation, making sure the necessary resources are there so we can do those things. So it's a bigger question around that. So, I'm asking Dr. Burtsong, so what you've given to us is aggressive to ensure that we meet all the other goals?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would not recommend.
I'm not saying on that one, I'm just, I'm asking just, you know, if it's on that one, then good. Then we've got something, and I can be fine with that, because you're the academic leader, and this is what you've come back with your team to say that, what we do, all we're doing is setting the goals. You know, what we want to see, you know, it's the administration's responsibility to come back and say, hey, this is how we get there. And if this is what you're saying that we've got, I know that we're trying to close some other gaps. I just feel like we're going around the wheel, and we've got a lot of things that we've got to complete on today. But I think if you're saying to us that this is gonna get to where we say we want to go as far as the big goals, then, you know, we can continue to flush out some of those other things, but I think we're kind of, maybe, we're not gonna get what we, what we all want, because we're not on the same sync on that one. But if there's enough aggressiveness there, I'm good with it, if the academic team is coming back and saying that this is what it's gonna do. So that's just me.
Okay, so then I, I have one, one request then for us to consider, if we would. So, Ms. Tanner, can you just go into board docs and just pull up monitoring port goal 2? Yep, just right up, right up, just passed it. Says goal, goal 2. So I'm not, this is not pertinent to this particular goal. Only thing I want to show here is there's a chart. So, if we can get a representation of, of this goal that would show the subgroups in overtime, how it shows the lines coming together, I think if we had a graphical depiction of what we are discussing, it might help inform our conversation.
I'm a visual learner.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm a visual learner.
Yeah, so I think the, the visual may be part of where we're, where we're, where we're struggling, because ultimately, if you had a chart and it had...
I mean, but that's what I have in my mind.
6 lines on it, and it showed what it was, we would see, are things closing or not?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that might be a, a way of helping us visualize the, the conversation that we're, that we're having. So, um, if I could, Dr. Martin, because I know time is tight, um, for the CCRI goal...
Yes.
Dr. Burtsong provided, um, recommended, uh, uh, measures for us to put into the goal 5, um, Ms. Tanner, you can take that down and come back to the, that sheet. Yep, the one you just had with the summary.
That's the, uh, 75.2.
So that has, uh, currently has blanks in it, and the recommendation is that, um, it will increase from, at least preliminarily, 75.2% for the 22, 23 school year to 90%. Is that, is, should that be at the end of...
20... Yeah, school year 26, 27.
For 28 accreditation.
End of the school year rather than during?
Yeah, what's the, what's the appropriate, uh, ending language? Currently, we, we have, we had, will increase to, we had increased from X percent in 2022 to Y percent in 2027.
Right.
Yours has during and during, so what, what should that be?
We get the score after the year, right?
Yeah, so during means at the end of that school year. Because you're not gonna have scores until the end of that school year. You might have pre, preliminary scores, because we still don't have final CCCRI scores. Um, so during, it could be, I could change during to end. Will increase from during...
Will increase from...
It's actually happening during the school year. I, I think it's semantics, we're, we're talking about the same thing. Because your CCCRI indicator, or the, the percentage point that you're gonna end up with at the end of the school year is based on what happened during that school year.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out on the, on the endpoint, when do we, when do we, when do we get the data, when do we measure it?
When will you get the data?
Right, so is it, like, right now, we know that we're waiting because this is the first time doing it.
Right.
So, at the end of the 26, 27 school year, would it be available in June, or would it wait until...
Mr. Jordan, did Dr. answer that?
Well, for the sake of right now, for the sake of right now, we can say, we can say at the end of the 26, 27 school year, pending additional information, right? We know we're starting with 75.2% that's based upon, uh, I guess last year's data, right?
Yep, 2022, 2023.
So, this, Mr. Jordan, this, what this goal is basically saying is that we're going to increase the percentage of children meeting the CCCRI, um, indicator. We're, we're starting at preliminarily at 75.2% now. That's the data point that we have now.
Right.
That was just changed this week. I mean, I mean, that's how often it's being updated. We don't have final data right now from the BDOE. So all this is saying is that this is where we are now, and by the end of school year 26, 27, we hope to be at 9, not hope, we will be at 90%.
Right, you said the end. That's all I want to be clear on.
So June.
But all of these data are based on SOL testing, end of year data.
Right, but I'm just saying, for the sake of the goal, we're just saying that we're starting in wherever we are today.
Today.
And our hope is to be able to say at the end of the 26, 27 school year, we'll be at 90%.
That's right, that's right.
Dr. Gabriel?
That's right.
So, Dr. Burtsong, when is the anticipated release of this, of the data? So that way, when we're thinking about how it's being monitored, what should a, an expectation be for our end, so that way, we're not, we're not anticipating data in May, but it doesn't come out till the end of, let's say, June?
So you should anticipate not knowing until you know, seriously, because it changes, and we don't know. Like now, we've been told, um, the deadline was extended, but they didn't give us a new deadline for providing the data. Am I correct, Ms. McGirtie? So I, I can't respond to that.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's an answer in and of itself, so, okay.
But what's being proposed for us to eventually be monitoring are the, the charts on that page, so we will...
That is correct.
We will know throughout the year.
Right.
Who's in AB and IB. We will know whether or not we have dual enrollment in the cohort. We will know those things that are variables in the formula that calculates the CCCRI.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so is everyone satisfied with what we have here, as far as our discussion today?
I asked Dr. Burtsong, is she clear?
Okay, so I'm gonna do a recap.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, shall I assume that based on our discussion today, that we are fine to start developing graphs related to the charts that have been provided to you, and that we are, especially as it relates to goal number four, I, I have the subgroups written down. We're going to keep the 5 percentage points, we're going to include graphs, and I don't think I've forgotten anything. So the data chart that I have with targets will remain, that's what I'm hearing.
No, wait, wait.
Oh, then, then no, I'm not clear.
Okay, so clarify, please.
We, we have, we've established 5 goals.
Right.
We know that in goal 1, that you gave us a starting point of, uh, wherever it is, a starting point of...
9.5. What are you looking at?
Gave us a starting point of 57.1. I don't know, what, what's the starting point for...
Our, our starting point...
Oh, 59.5.
They're accreditation year, 59.5.
Okay, it's the starting point, and ultimately, 100% is what we have, okay? So we got that straight. And then for goal 2, we're straight on, it's gonna be 45 and 75%.
We changed 65 to 75.
Correct, right? Then we know for goal 3... Uh, we, we know, using the board's language, is 43 and 75, right?
43 to 75, right?
And then, goal 4, we know is at least 5% for, but we, we still gotta work on goal 4. Goal 4 is still being worked on.
What am I doing with goal 4?
You're, we're, we have, to make sure, we, we have some information, we have to respond back to you.
If we want to increase it above 5 points.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
What's the pin, then tell us, what is it then?
It is the 5 percentage points with the comparison groups, that's what it is.
That's what, what my take, takeaway was.
Okay, well, I didn't, I don't think that's where we are.
Nope, the only point that you had, that you had said was, the, in addition to the acceler, the accelerated, like...
Which we don't have yet.
We, we don't have that yet.
Which is what we need, which is what we need to be able to respond back to in our language, so that the, so that Dr. Burtsong is clear on that.
But that's where your graph is gonna come in, because...
The graph is just gonna help us to see it. The, 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 the purpose of saying the graph was being able to see where each subgroup is, and if you had the 5 percentage point, what that looks like. Because I think that graph may look like, there'll be parallel lines.
Right.
What we were trying to figure out is to, how do we go from parallel lines that shows some curvature, so that there's some closing, and you just don't have parallel lines that go on forever, and you never see the closing? So that's why I said that is where I thought we owed feedback to Dr. Burtsong, not that she owed additional feedback to us.
So then, what we need to see is the graph, and then we provide the feedback back as far as, maybe it's 5 percentage points this year, but maybe it's 10 percentage points, and then 15 percentage points in order to close the gap.
But we'll, we'll come, we'll come back at the 20th meeting with being able to visualize that. Yes, we'll figure that out.
Dr. Burtsong is not doing anything with 4, it's our work to show what that looks like.
All we're asking Dr. Burtsong to do is if she can at least show us, if she can graph out for us what the 5%...
I can.
5 percentage point looks like. I know, but you don't, we don't... Well, then you can do it too.
In addition to the, the graph you want, the chart, you want a graph of what I presented here? Okay, that's, yeah, we got that. Graph.
So I have a graph right here, that I have doodled out. So essentially, it shows if the, I know you can't see this, my little graph. If, um, so the starting points are different between the, um, black subgroup and the white subgroup, right? So if the black subgroup starts here and incrementally goes up 5 percentage points, they, um, and the white subgroup starts here and incrementally goes up 5 percentage points, the white subgroup will go up 5, then 10 over 2 years. Um, the black will go up 5, then 10, but then the black subgroup will be eventually getting up to where the white subgroup started and surpassing, and we all have high achieving students. See how that works? That's how we close the gap.
Yep.
So you're gonna send us the graph?
I, I think the graph, I, I think the graph is a good pictorial, uh, image of where we want to be. And, and it shows the acceleration, so I don't, I don't mind the graph with the percentage points. But we're not looking, we're, what we're not saying is that the white subgroup is going up by 5 points, 5 percentage points. We're talking specifically about these subgroups. So, yeah, that, that's what it is.
Our goal is for everyone to be high achieving.
Yes.
Right, which is, which is, which is not what the, yes, that is our overarching vision, but it's not what the goal says.
Focus on our focus.
And this is, and this is all concept right now, things are gonna move at different paces, and we know this. We just want them to move above 5% ditch points.
Anyway, we'll, we'll work on a chart, and we'll, if we can get on the agenda for the 20th meeting, we can nail that down. And then we're good with, uh...
CCRI.
CCRI.
Yep.
We have not had any discussion about the interims. So, that's what we need to, we still have to come back and have the discussion around the interims.
They're perfect.
Well...
She's the expert.
I mean, I, I personally have questions about them, but, um, I mean, I just would like to hear more about them and how, um, you know, their correlation with the goals, and how, um, you come, how you determined that these were the right ones, and how you came up with, with them, um, with some of them, and how... So I do want to have a little more discussion around them, but I do understand that right now, we have a lot of, a lot of other things to discuss. So, I, you know, I would like to come back to it, um...
And I'm happy to share right now, if you'd like to hear.
Yes, please.
Put me in the key for the question.
Let's, let's just be clear, so we're gonna, what are we doing, Madam Chair? We're gonna talk through the interim goals?
Talking about the interim goals.
Okay.
The interim measures.
It's upon a person's privilege, just in that one. We theoretically have 33 more minutes left in this session. Can we prioritize at this particular point, what we're going to do as a board, and what we're gonna complete today? Or if we're gonna need, or we're gonna need additional time?
I have deferred to talk about this at another time, so...
Because, I mean, the back-to-school report's almost 40 some odd one pages, so I just want us to, what, we have folks that are here, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna finish everything that we've got on the agenda today? Or are we gonna make some adjustments, just so that we can make sure we, you know, we get everything we said we're gonna do?
Well, I think, um, the use of committees and assignments is something we can...
No, I think we need to talk about that, right?
But, um, if I'm looking at what's on here...
And even the, um, the policies piece down there that Dr. Poe has, he does a great job in outlining what they were. We've had the committee on that one, and I think if we have questions...
There's a lot of legal references.
It's a lot of legal references that you can, so we can skip that out there. So we're gaining some time back, but the, uh, the other items that you got down there, so like the back-to-school, I think you've got some...
We have building principals who have been sitting patiently and graciously.
And, um, the book of T. Watson update at this, it's just a...
It looks like we, I mean, really, all these are...
Important, so are we putting a timeframe, so we kind of get through on it?
I would like to defer the summer school update unless there's something different.
We talked about that yesterday in agenda planning.
Yeah, that's cool.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we have prepared to do, is not to provide a formal presentation, but we gave you the information. We also gave you a copy of the presentation, and so if you have questions, we're happy to answer.
Okay, so we're removing 5.02 right now.
Yep, and then they...
5.01.
5, 5.01. Five, five, five point zero one.
And, and I've read through the continuing, yep, and I...
We have principals here, and they...
That was the, the back-to-school update. The continuing the drive, I read that, it's just the, the data points on that one. Honestly, we, if, that could be a report, um, and if we've got any questions, so we're good on...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anyone oppose?
No.
The recommendations? Okay, great.
Great.
And then, uh, the Booker T. Washington feasibility study update, we've got that one. And so, and then we've got Dr. Poe's six point zero one out, and if we've got questions, we'll come on that one. Okay.
So, I just will make sure, just for clarity then, we, we are deferring the discussion around the interim goals.
To the twentieth.
To another meeting.
Yeah.
We're not gonna do any discussion of interim goals on any goal tonight.
I said I'm happy to do that.
No, I know, I'm, I'm asking the, the chair and the board.
That's when I said to go ahead and do it.
Well, we're not gonna have time to get through all of them, but... No, it won't.
Well, Dr. Burson seems to think she can.
Yeah, I'm not, my question is not about Dr. Burson, my question is about the board. So, if we want to, maybe we can ask Dr. Burson to give us an example, to discuss one. And then that can get us prepared for how we can finish the rest of them. And if you wanna start with the first one.
Goal one.
Alright, cool.
Alright. Alright.
For Dr. Burson.
Thank you very much. So, goal one was around one hundred percent of schools will be accredited by the twenty-seven, twenty-eight accreditation year. Um, the percentage of schools meeting accreditation requirements will increase from fifty-seven point one percent during accreditation year twenty-two, twenty-three, to sixty-five point eight percent during accreditation year twenty-four, twenty-five. And so, at the end of the day, so the, um, the interim goals are around areas related to chronic absenteeism and student, students who drop out. We cannot teach children if they are not in school. We need our children in school each and every day. Within Norfolk Public Schools, within the region, within the state, within the nation, especially after the pandemic. School divisions have been experiencing, experiencing high levels of chronic absenteeism. That has to be a focus for us. It's also one of the three big rocks that we shared, I shared during the Leadership Institute. It's certainly an area of focus for us. And it sounds so basic, but at the end of the day, if children aren't in school, then we can't teach them the things that they need to learn. So, around chronic absenteeism, what we've done, so that the board can monitor this throughout the school year, we have set targets for each quarter. So, for example, we provided, uh, data to you from last school year, and where, where we hope to be, hope is not a plan, hope is not a strategy, where we will be, um, during each quarter. So, for example, the percentage of students who are chronically absent will decrease from twenty percent during quarter one of school year twenty-two, twenty-three, to nineteen percent during quarter one of the school year. From twenty-two point five percent during quarter two of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, to eighteen percent during this school year. From twenty-two point eight percent during quarter three of this school year, to seventeen percent during quarter three of this year. And finally, in quarter four, from twenty percent, um, during quarter four of last school year, to sixteen percent this school year.
There's a typo, so just... Say twenty-four on the end of the last one, the last line.
Okay, thank you. So, with that said, um, so we're gonna be looking at that, building principals are aware of this push, right? Building principals, one left, one still here. So, we, and we even have a, a huge, uh, campaign, communications campaign, um, so that we can encourage our families and children to make sure kids are in school every day, all day. So, we're very excited about that. And again, too, we need to do everything that we can, um, to ensure that our kids are not dropping out. We need to identify the root causes of what's causing them to drop out of school, and then put the supports in place so that they attend school on a regular basis. So I won't read each of the data points to you, but I provided data from last school year for each quarter, and the targets for this school year. And again, at the end of the day, um, with the rates that we have been experiencing, experiencing since the pandemic, we really need to focus on this. And if we have our kids, we do believe, we have wonderful teachers, we have the best teachers, I've always said this. And if our kids can get in front of our teachers daily, we know we can get them where they need to be. So that's why we have picked these two areas to focus upon, um, as it relates to getting our schools accredited. Was that timely enough, Mr. Jordan?
We haven't had the feedback yet, so...
Okay.
Questions? Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
So, so my question is really a general question, as we look at the report outs for, um, each of the goals. But for example, for goal one, as we kind of, as we discussed early on about the graphs, can we include comparisons to the state? Uh, what the state rates are for these, for these items?
I, I don't know if the state, can we get a chronic absenteeism rate for the, some of the state, by quarter? Yeah, by quarter, I didn't think so.
Not by quarter, but, but whatever the state baseline is, as we, as we look at it, probably from, on an annual basis, we'll be able to compare ourselves with what the state average is.
Okay.
But I think because these are the quarterly ones, yeah, they're...
See if we're on target, or...
I, I, I just like for, for, I know we discussed, I know we discussed having the state comparison, and then for specifically for the math and the reading, the proficient, and then the high proficient. Or, it was proficiency, and then, uh, yeah, high proficient.
In our, in our data reporting.
In our data report, yeah.
Okay, um, Ms. Vaseen, go ahead.
So, for a goal, we're talking about goal one, right? So, I believe for, cause we had talked about this previously, the, the chronic absenteeism and dropout rates were chosen as, um, interim progress measures because of their connection, uh, by the state to accreditation. Correct?
Well, yes, the state also looks at, at these areas too.
Okay, so, but you...
Specifically, yes, as it relates to student engagement.
Right. But otherwise, but you also felt strongly that they, that they correlated, um, pretty strongly with, um, uh, school accreditation, that you felt like these were, these two were, um, ones that you felt, uh...
I felt in my team also felt that way.
And your team felt were, were ones, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, uh, so, I guess my, so to the extent that the, that, uh, that the interim goals should be predictive.
Yes.
I guess my question is, so let's say we had, I don't know what our data shows in terms of, um, the connectivity between our schools that are currently accredited, and what their absenteeism rates and dropout rates look like. But, just hypothetically, I guess I'm, what I like to get some, a better understanding of is, let's say we had a one hundred percent attendance rate and a zero percent dropout rate. How does that directly impact, directly, I'm using that word intentionally. How does that directly impact the, uh, the school, a, a school or schools being accredited? In the absence of chronic absenteeism? If chronic absenteeism is a measure.
Yeah.
That impacts whether or not a school is accredited, I get that at the end. But, it doesn't necessarily follow, at least I'm struggling with, understanding how it would follow that having a hundred percent attendance and zero percent dropout rate would directly result in, uh, a school being accredited.
So, for example, with chronic absenteeism, there's a benchmark that we have to meet in order for schools to be accredited. If schools don't meet that benchmark, they can be high performing in academics, and if they don't meet it in that area, they're not going to be accredited.
Right, so I get, that's what I'm saying, I get that.
Yeah.
So what's that, what's that, um...
But in, even so, Mr. Jordan, just say that, that wouldn't keep schools from being accredited, although it, it will. We need kids in school.
Oh, no, no, I, I get that part, I'm, that's why I said directly. So, if the state says that if a school has a chronic absenteeism rate of a certain amount, then that school will not be accredited, I, I get that. I don't know what it is, but I get, I get the connection there.
Yes.
But I'm saying, in terms...
Eighty-five percent is the benchmark.
Right. But I'm saying, in terms of the, uh, the other things that go into accreditation that are tied to what students know, being in the classroom is good, obviously, but it doesn't necessarily automatically equate to, if everybody was in the classroom, then the student performance would result in the school being accredited. So, so to me, what I'm, what I would look for is, and it might be part of the other interims, as Mr. Clayton was saying earlier, but to me, there's more, there's something else that we could monitor, that may already be included in some of these others, that would help determine whether or not a school is on track for accreditation. Cause like, when I looked at the, um, like the school improvement plans, they have different things that you all are monitoring monthly, that I guess would give you all information as to whether or not you think a school is on track for something. And so, I guess I would ask, is there a interim goal associated with student knowledge that should be a part of this, in addition to the two that you have?
So, I can appreciate that. So, with the other areas, the other, well, all of them. With the remaining goal areas, there's an academic focus, with the exception of number five, but still, it has an academic focus if you're looking at students enrolled in advanced placement courses, and dual enrollment courses, and things of that nature. So, we are monitoring how the kids are doing academically, especially in the area of reading and math proficiency. As you can see, we have all kinds of data from all kinds of assessments within this document that I provided to you, and you will be monitoring that. So for us, I do think these two areas are, are critical to schools' accreditation. However, at the end of the day, we're an institution of learning, we want our kids to learn. And I think the focus on math and English or reading is right, right where we need to be. I don't think we need to double goals in reading and math here, because they're already a part of the plan. You're already going to be monitoring that throughout the year. So we have the academic pieces, and we have the student engagement pieces. So a good combination means their schools are gonna be accredited, right, ladies?
And you feel that the, cause to me, a lot of student attendance is, is an adult thing, right?
Especially at the elementary level.
Right, so you feel comfortable that you and your team can influence, uh, adult behavior that results in students attending school? Okay, no, I just, I'm just...
We, we have to.
I'm just saying, from our...
We have to have our kids here.
Yeah, from the board perspective, we're, we're gonna try to monitor and set, and be clear about what you are able to influence. And I'm just asking you to give me at least a comfort level, that you feel comfortable about being able to influence that.
And even if I couldn't, it's still a part of accreditation.
Oh, no, I get it, I get it.
And if we won't make it, we won't be accredited, which means we won't make this goal.
Those are my questions.
Dr. Martin?
Yes, go ahead.
And Dr. Burson, if, if I may, and, um, I'm glad you asked, you asked that question, it made me feel a little more comfortable, and I, I, in all honesty, I just wanted to feel more comfortable, I guess, to ask, um, this question as well. So, you know, in the equity report, um, uh, there was a lot, uh, that, that I think was said about some areas that I think, uh, you know, that we could, we could approve upon, obviously. And when I think about chronic absenteeism, and, you know, some of the pieces that we have control over, and then the pieces that we don't have control over, and, um, but I know we are working really hard to, and, uh, to, um, to expand and improve our multi-tiered systems of support, and I know that's gonna be talked about, I think, later on, um, this evening. But one of the things I've, you know, while I don't necessarily have control over this, but one of the things I was really hoping to see somewhere in the interim goals was something really focused on multi-tiered systems of support. And this was like, kind of an area where I thought perhaps there might be that piece. Cause I do see it, uh, really heavily connected to the accreditation of schools, because it is tied to chronic absenteeism, it's student engagement, academic learning, behavior, it's all of those pieces that keep kids at school, so that they're learning, and, um, and, and getting what they need, so that they can succeed at school. So, I don't know, that was just a thought of mine, um, you know, you, you could take it to your team and, and, um, and think about it, it's that whole child perspective, um, that has all of those components, which I know you're gonna talk about. But I guess that was just one of the pieces that I thought we could take that, you know, that recommendation from the equity audit, and, um, you know, it was, is one of those things I was, I was hoping to see somewhere integrated, um, into, uh, you know, a goal, you know, which even for, for me as a board member, I was hoping we might have that discussion somewhere, even with the constraint piece, you know, like, um, when we talk about it, um, how that might even work. You know, we'll talk about that later, but, um, but anyway, I was just wondering if you talked about that, or thought about that with that chronic absenteeism piece, because there's so much, it's such a complicated, um, factor, um, as, as we all know, um...
There are a million other things, really, in our thinking that we could have added to this plan.
I'm sure.
But we had to, to be very streamlined in our efforts, and focus on our focus.
Right. But that one, MTSs is a really, you know...
It is, and that's why it's a major part of our strategic plan.
Exactly, that's what I saw there, yeah.
So, the board will still monitor that, it's just not in this document. It is a part of our strategic plan with interim measures and goals that will be reported out to the bo, board.
Right, but I, yeah, but that, this pulls it out as a, a priority focus, though, I thought, yeah.
If I, but we have to be careful, because, not that I disagree with anything that you said, but if we put forward the, the strategy or the recommendation.
I know.
Then it becomes ours, and it's no longer the superintendent's.
I know, I get it.
And then we can't hold the superintendent accountable for something that we imposed.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
As of now, this is what.
I know.
What, what has been laid out for us to, to consider.
Okay, Dr. Martin? Yeah. Alright, moving on, to use of committees and assignments.
The one goal.
I know.
So, this was distributed out. We've talked a lot about how we're using our, these, um, so this audit finance facilities legislative policy, um, and then of course, our student support, we have those. I think, I don't know that we need to talk about student support so much. Um, unless you wanna switch from group A to B, or vice versa. So, I wanna open up the discussion about our use of committees, do we, are there some committees that we maybe don't need our representation? Um, my idea would be that, you know, with the committees, they have chairs, or whatever they call it, according to the committee. And I would like to get them more involved in our meetings, to have them come and present to us.
Are you talking about the, the board?
Yeah, these, the, um, committee assignments, I'm looking at these, so if, if there's... I'm not talking about students committees, I'm talking about our standing committee, our standing committees.
These, audit, finance, facilities, legislative?
Legislative policy.
Oh, no, I think, I think we need to talk more broadly about...
We do, I'm speaking broadly, and maybe that's, that's the issue, is that, um, do we, how do we wanna use our committees? How do we wanna spend our time? And is there a way that we can, you know, maybe... And is there a way that we can, you know, maybe um what do I want to say, to delegate some of the responsibilities that we have taken on to those who are in leadership positions within these committees? Those are just a couple of the things, so I'm just trying to start the conversation.
Oh, fuck.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, I don't think it's any surprise, I'm a strong believer in um y'all can't hear me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got the whole, Keith, I got a mask on. Um firmly believe in the respect that we, when we get here, the board does board work. Of course, we have our work sessions so we can talk about things a little bit more. Um but committee work needs to be a committee work. Um however, I believe that we can tighten that up and we start it, then we fall off on it, like we talked about committee reports. Um being able to report out so that what one board member knows or two board members who are on the committee, everybody knows. And so I think that we need to tighten up on the reporting aspect and what that looks like. Um use board docs a lot more for that one. And even at a quarterly or whenever it needs to be, there are certain things like legislative. We know legislative coming up, well, that's more of a a physical item, but we're supposed to also vote on the V S B A's policy and then and their legislative agenda. So there's some things that we need to work within. Um but I believe that the committees that we have are are fine. I just think that we need to fine tune the reporting aspect of it and make that very clear um as to what, and I think that Valda gave us um descriptions and as well as what those report outs could look like. Um and I think that that would help us in doing our work because sometimes when we have seven different voices trying to go over the same thing rather than having something on the table that we can be focused on, um that's when the conversations can get, you know, we're kind of can can get a little long. So if we can get a little bit focused on that one. Um and I think, of course, we have some of the other ones that we have representatives, like I serve on the governor's school in CSEP, and then we've got W H R O, some of the other ones that we have to do. Um that they're there, but I just think that we need to focus and tune up that um that reporting aspect. And if we do that, that would help out a lot. And as well as giving each committee a thorough review on what their job descriptions are, what their responsibilities are um and and role and function. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. So one of the things that I was talking about with reporting is I'd like to hear from, you know, they elect um officers in in a lot of these committees, and I'd like to hear directly from them instead of from-
If I may, are you talking about the school board task forces like G I C and C I C and?
Those is, yeah, as well.
Those two different things. So some of those are, those are mandated, um and those are separate out of there. And then we have our own committees. Um so I just wanted to differentiate, there's two different separate things on that one. And I think I hear what you're saying, you want them to come, um especially like, you know, they give their reports and things like that. We used to have, and I think at one point in time, it was like we used to, Rodney, y'all were around here for that.
Chat and choose?
We had chat and choose, an opportunity for the task force members to meet with the board and actually talk about those things. So I think those are two different things, but I definitely hear where you're coming from on that.
Advisory committees.
Yeah, the advisory committees.
Right, I understand that. So that that is where my mind is, but I honestly have not been to a facilities committee meeting, so
And we don't have a, we don't have, we don't elect.
Okay.
There's no, as far as I know, there's, and in all of these, there's no
No.
like designated um person, but-
Chair points at the top of the year.
There's no designated person.
Well, someone, I'm just saying to get them more involved in coming and reporting out as needed instead of having-
You mean this superintendent designee that is on that committee?
Sure.
Okay.
I was hoping that that to have the community who's involved to designate someone to come in. I mean, but again, this is a fluid conversation.
I think you're talking about, so on the on the board standing committees, those are board committees and then the superintendent assigns
Right.
staff members to support the committee.
Yes.
So if there's any report out, it would be from board members unless we, like we do with Dr. Poe, Dr. Poe.
I'm wondering why we we have people who um are on the committees that are doing the work of the committee that I think when at all possible, I'd like to hear directly from them.
I think you're talking about advisory committees or task forces, right? Because the board standing committees are standing committees of the board. There there is no other they or them, it's it's we and us.
There's no community members on those standing committees.
But what you are saying is that you don't want to hear from like us per se, you want to hear from Mr. Fraley.
Right.
Okay, but well, I think I think it goes back to what Mr. Clayton was saying was, I think we need to we can have a shared description of what that committee is, the purpose of the committee, and then what are the goals in the report out? Because whether it's, you know, me reporting it or or he's reporting it, it's, the information is the information.
And I'd be happy to take that project on. Like-
I will.
I could help you with that.
And do some descriptions and come back on that one.
Okay.
And then have something that we can-
Wasn't that one of the tasks that we had anyway?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And just um to be clear, um Mr. Clayton and Ms. Moore Buffalo have stepped up to um lead us in our legislative committee work.
Okay, hold on.
And the bring your-
Bring a legislator-
Legislature to school event.
Yep. First thing, though, is you two are going to write up a description of each of the board's standing committees. Okay.
And the, our former governance trainers actually gave us templates that we can work on, so yeah.
So one of one of the questions I believe was also on the table for the past, I think, couple of years, I think, at least two years, was also whether we wanted committees to maintain committees or to be a committee of one um was something that we also, I think, had talked about. So um just as, I think we could maintain as is and then when we get these descriptions, I don't know, uh and have a shared understanding of what these committees do and how they function.
And MTSS.
Yeah, I I think once we got something on a table like that, then we can make a collective decision.
There's some confusion and then we'll we'll just get on the same page. But I do, one of one of the important things that I do think that we need to do, again, is with the advisory committees, and we've talked about this a lot, is talk about how we're engaging our advisory committees um as the year is starting, like we definitely um have to have to improve our feedback mechanism. You know, we've gotten letters from both C I C and G I C um with some great recommendations as always, and um I think we need to talk about how we respond back to those committees. I personally really love the chat and choose that we used to do, but um
I'm in an extra hour early.
You know, I wouldn't mind engaging them in that in that way, but um you know, some, or or maybe we could schedule, you know, trying to go to their meetings and have some sort of engagement with them, but something, but we have to, we have to do better at um providing feedback to them.
Right, I just feel like there's, we're we're a bit disconnected and I want to try to improve that, is probably what I'm saying. Go ahead.
My, I guess my feedback is I would welcome the the recommendations that come from the committee. But I also would caution us that if we're going to uh focus on what we spent the first part of the meeting focusing on, I feel like we're we're caught, like we're half in, half out. That if we're going to make the shift and the board is going to focus on the goals and priorities and student outcomes, then we also going to have to be able to relinquish some of our involvement in the day-to-day operations so that we can focus on, like we did the whole exercise around the board's role and superintendent's role. I will look forward to the recommendation, but I I just think in terms of committees and even with even some of the comments around feedback to the advisory committees, that yes, I think we should do something, but these may be practices that get shifted. And we may need to have the conversation that we would have the administration provide those things that the administration is equipped to provide and that we provide our focus on what we said we're going to focus on and 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 monitoring those things. And I think for us to um break old habits is going to take a lot of focus and attention and practice. And I think we're going to have to practice that, and if we keep holding on to things that we want to manage versus govern, I think we're going to struggle with trying to get to the point where we learn how to be focused on the goals. So and then I'm included in that as well, all of us are included in that. So I think we need to get some additional thought about how do we relinquish our involvement in some things, and maybe that's what that whole theory of action, all part of that is about. And really allow the administration to handle the things that we're used to being involved in and we provide focus on monitoring the goals and the other things that may get reported to us, like the strategic plan progress and and so forth. So I just want to put that out there that we don't do to ourselves what I think we often do to teachers and principals in the building is that we add on stuff and never take anything away. And I think we have the opportunity to monitor and and to demonstrate as a board how we're going to shift and not add on stuff. And then that helps the superintendent to then also let that permeate throughout the the building and the classroom versus us just adding on stuff that gets pushed down.
Yeah, right, which means we take, you know, less involvement in some of these extra responsibilities.
Yeah, you you want to know, you want to know some, there's uh one of the conferences um that I went to, there was a district that was talking about how focused they had become on student outcomes. And you know, they're like us, they have hundreds and hundreds of policies and they have become so focused on it and even down to the policies that they review that they had narrowed down that to twenty policies that they focus on that they don't have a need for a policy committee. You know, because they literally, they said, these are our board policies, these are our twenty policies on focus on students. And the rest are the superintendent's. Like current or team, they focus on that, those policies. The rest are ours, twenty. Like it was like something very small. Um I just remember that and I was like, how nice is that? That you could say this belongs in in the superintendent's lane and this belongs in our lane. And like, it's very clear, you know, makes things very clear. But anyway, it just, your comment just reminded me of that, so. And you're right, the feedback piece, you know, didn't, I didn't say, you know, I did say we need to figure it out, but somebody needs to provide feedback um to the advisory committees because they do work very hard for for us.
And usually it's administrative work, really, is what they're asking about our processes and resources and it's more-
Yeah, but just, they just need response. Acknowledgement.
Right.
So um in looking at the time and knowing that we have the guests in our room, is it possible that we can um uh carry on this discussion um?
We're wrapped up, I don't think we have any more discussion on this topic.
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you. Um so up next we have, did we delete the summer school?
Yep.
And, okay, so we have the um back to school update. Dr. Poe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My pen.
I'll say it's mine now. All right. Good, uh where's the clicker?
You can click the end of your pen.
All right, uh good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the school board, and Dr. Birdsong. Uh right now, I'm here with a couple of star principals with us today uh to present back to school information. The message was direct and well received from Dr. Birdsong at the Summer Leadership Institute with a focus on literacy, attendance, and accountability for this school year. These three targets areas stem directly from our data and will drive discussions throughout the year to keep us focused. During this presentation, excuse me, you'll hear about instructional updates to include pre-K, V S A, attendance, safety, security, and health, transportation and operations, staffing, M T S S, and leadership exemplars from two of our outstanding principals, Mrs. Lawrence from Northside Middle and Mrs. Boone from Richard Bowling Elementary School. In planning for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there have been many updates to the focus on literacy. From Hagerty for early literacy in preschool to continued coaching in letters to now include preschool teachers, upgraded preschool classroom libraries, free books for all Title I kindergartners when they registered for school, a revised grade-two phonics curriculum, the Super Kids kindergarten phonemic awareness resources in all of our kindergarten classes, linking phonics to emergent readers, revised grades three through five on grade-level texts within the curriculum, holding monthly data meetings with middle school English teachers, a restructured reading support block for all middle schools. We also relinked digital content in the curriculum and pacing guides and an increased focus on writing at the secondary level as well as professional development throughout to support all of this work. Additionally, all the unit assessments were reviewed and improved in content and alignment over the summer using data and teacher feedback. The lesson plan template was redesigned to add focus to alignment and to use formative and summative data on a daily basis. Several curriculum revisions and improvements to pacing that allow a remediation time throughout the year instead of just at the end of the year was also put into place. There remains uh consistent use of tutors for early literacy, our PALS tutors as we call them, middle school math and reading and the literacy lab. Um we also still have F E V twenty-four hour support that we use during the school day and encourage after-school use. And we've uh re-contracted with university instructors with tutors in place at our tier-three schools. Uh to prepare for the year, we've also had several opportunities for professional learning as well as uh professional learning integrated throughout the academic calendar. There were summer retreats for math and reading specialists, a focus on cultural competency professional development for central office coordinators and specialists, the Summer Leadership Institute, the Three-Day New Teacher Institute, which included all long-term substitutes that were already contracted. Several optional sessions were also included over the summer for teachers. Going into the year, there is a focus on literacy that includes the Virginia, so Virginia Literacy Act professional development for reading specialists, continued coaching training for central office team members, curriculum and Lexia professional development, and increased pre-K professional development as well. Additionally, there is structured professional development being offered throughout the year on cultural competencies with representatives from every school. Cultural competency skills are also being integrated into all curricular professional development sessions to emphasize their importance. For some specific updates on preschool, although the application's been online and in two languages the past two years, this is the first year that it was online in parent view for an online entry to align with the K-12 registration process. This allowed for a more streamlined registration process in the long run. As a part of the process, however, there are three required documents to ensure V P I guidelines are being followed, the proof of income, proof of residency, and a birth certificate. The Early Learning Department uses multiple means of communication to market the preschool program, as seen on the slide, to include the website, social media outlets, robo calls, family engagement specialists, also hung informational door hangers throughout their school communities. Community walks were uh taken part of in collaboration with ready regions as well. Parents were supported with this change to an online application through ensuring the application works on any device with the establishment of a preschool hotline and email address. And furthermore, the website included an F A Q which gave parents information regarding the application process, including help a help desk number for support. There was a great turnout at the two-day registration event at the Family Wellness Center, at the Grandy Center, and families were supported at schools and at our community partners uh such as the Norfolk Public Library. The communications on applying for pre-K led to even higher numbers of applications than last year. Seen on this slide are the preschool enrollment numbers as of September first for our three-year-old program. The program is fully enrolled with a waitlist. However, due to the addition of two pre-K teachers, the waitlist is smaller than it was at this time last year. The next two slides show the preschool preschool four-year-old numbers for the ant, for the number of classes, capacity, current enrollment, and waitlisted. These are the numbers for Bayview through Little Creek with Berkeley, Easton, Jaycocks, Larchmont, Larrymore, and Lynwood showing waitlists. Here are Calcott through Willoughby with waitlists at Terrleton and Willoughby. And there's currently a total of sixty-five students on the waitlist and there are more applications to process following the ten-day count. All applications received after August twenty-first will be processed for preschool after September eleventh, the tenth day of school. Applications are reviewed based on V P I guidelines and the applications are then grouped by school zone. Children are placed onto the rosters if these, if there is space at the school. Furthermore, families are offered out-of-zone placement following the ten-day count, however, they have to provide their own transportation. During this time, the Early Learning and Title One Department are processing all no-shows as well. As you see on the slide, this is a collaboration between the Department of Schools, or sorry, between the Department, schools, as well as parents and guardians. Preschool enrollment is a year-long process. Applications are reviewed and processed through spring break. During the months of February through April, the department is continuing to enroll for the current year while starting enrollment for the next year. As with any change in process, issues may arise. Starting a new system for the application and synergy did cause us some issues. Starting a new system for the application in synergy did cause us some issues this summer. Parents had to sign up in parent view or remember their parent view email and password to be able to complete the application. And several families had to get support from the help desk to get their account set up or working. There were additional supports needed from IT due to synergy creating error messages that not allowing the team to process the accepted app and accept applications. Synergy also created duplicates by allowing parents to submit more than one application in many cases. When field testing, the team was not able to submit more than one application. So this was a glitch that had to be fixed after the applications were already live. Furthermore, the synergy update hid the application from families and the enrollment team, therefore causing an influx of phone calls. So parents had submitted it and then synergy, it wasn't viewable to either the parents or internal. Lastly, parents were submitting the application without the correct documentation, which then had to be corrected as well. Through addressing concerns, the early learning department found out what families were receiving emails randomly. And this caused confusion for families as it was providing the incorrect status of the application. It was also discovered that a large group of parents did not receive their acceptance email when the original batch of emails were sent through synergy. Other concerns included parents asking for out of zone requests, which cannot be addressed until after the school 10-day count, so that all VPI eligible students are placed in their zone school prior to offering those slots to out of zone children. The department also found out from parents, they needed some guidance to look at the email or to, to hear the voicemails that were in many instances, uh, waiting for them on their systems. Alignment concerns on student enrollment had to be addressed with schools prior to being able to place additional students on rosters, which also caused a delay in parent response times. So all this leads to planning for next year that's already begun. Uh, the team has several solutions in place. Creating clear deadlines, deadlines within all communications will be set and increased communication will be provided to families to help increase understanding of where their child's application is throughout the entire process. Increased information will be shared regarding the programs, purpose and selection process by updating the phases on the website and creating an informational video for parents to watch. To support schools with registration, there will be more training provided as well as weekly email communications to remind them to register students on their roster within the two-week time period. This will be another opportunity to reach parents on a more timely basis. There will be monthly meetings with IT and synergy to address all glitches and errors in the process as soon as they occur. Furthermore, a preschool registration fair will be conducted in the spring to help families with parent view and the full application process. There will continue to be a spring community walk, or continue to be spring community walks with locations added. There will be increased communications with the executive directors of elementary schools when registration begins to assist with having schools register students within the two-week window. And additional resources will be provided to schools that provide contact and enrollment information, such as providing just contact cards for parents to pick up when they're in the schools. We're also going to add an additional part-time staff to support ongoing enrollment and the increased volume of applications that we've seen. This will assist with the timeliness of the review and the communications to parents. However, in all this, there is a lot of good news. This slide shows our three-year trend data for pre-K application numbers and enrollment as of day, day four. There has been a steady increase of applications and enrollment into our pre-scale school age program. This year for the four-year-old program alone, there are, alone, there are 400 more applications than we had at this time last year. There's also been an increase in enrollment to our preschool programs for pre-K three and four of nearly 300 students as compared to this time last year. Parents may continue to contact the Office of Early Learning Department at the contact information list on this slide via email or phone for assistance. Moving on to our Virtual Scholars Academy, this slide shows the enrollment by grade level for the VSA, which is fully run through Virtual Virginia now. And this year there is currently a total of 190 students enrolled and 38 of those students are students with disabilities. And here is the trend data broken down by demographic. As seen here, enrollment has decreased by nearly 100 students from last year. However, the demographics nearly match the division-wide student demographics of our division. Moving on to attendance, safety, security and health, the 23-24 school year budget added security personnel positions to include 18 new security officers and five zone supervisors to ensure safer and more secure schools for students, staff and visitors. The number of threat assessment and crisis team training meetings has also been increased to further enhance preparedness throughout the year. And to maintain high security standards, the Raptor Visitor Management System will continue to be utilized and weapons detection systems have been deployed at all school sites, including football venues. Safety and security is prioritized and surveillance systems are regularly enhanced to ensure optimal security measures. Although all NPS schools have camera systems in place, the first year of a five-year plan upgrade to all cameras has been completed. Currently, all high schools have upgraded security cameras and upgrades to cameras in K-8 schools and all middle schools are in place for this year. To monitor building incidents on the go, our incident reporting system will continue to be used. Vaccines are also available for individuals aged six months to adulthood and can be obtained through doctors, pharmacies and public health agencies. And this information is shared with stakeholders and representatives from the Health Department and they were also present at the Unity and the Community Event, um, to offer their services. NPS has established a new partnership with the city's Attorney's Office for Professional Development to improve truant case preparation. There is additional collaboration with the Norfolk Court Services Unit to facilitate truancy multidisciplinary team meetings where community agency representatives will be involved. And this directly relates to our attendance focus. Additionally, diversion programs that are specifically designed for truant secondary students will be accessed this year. Several supports and incentives have been put in place as well. Continuing the partnership with youth outreach, urban resources and services, the Student Assistance Program will provide incentives to increase attendance and minimize truancy and tardiness among students. Needs of dual-language learners that may be barriers to attendance such as vital records will be addressed to include translation services, medical services and legal services. And they will also continue to, uh, enrich, enrichment programs and enrollment fees for vocational programs and provide PPE for vocational students. During the Summer Leadership Institute, training focused on VDOE and NPS expectations was provided. During the training, there was a focus on principal-led attendance efforts at all schools for MTSS, school attendance teams reviewing data weekly to implement tiered interventions, and intentional completion of attendance plans with parents and guardians to address barriers to daily attendance and to identify root causes early in the school year. Moving to transportation and operations, there is a continued alignment of routes to improve efficiency with all busing, um, and getting all students to and from school on a timely basis. As you're well aware, school start times have also transitioned back to pre-pandemic stagger times for all of our schools. And we continue to offer free meals to all students through the Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP. Additionally, sites that offer an after-school program offer a snack or a supper for students. And as a part of continued efforts to attract highly qualified candidates, the Department of Human Resources has hosted and attended nearly 40 teacher-specific recruitment events over the past year. NPS hosted 11 job fairs and traveled across the United States to 27 events hosted by other organizations, primarily colleges and universities with teacher education programs. As a result of these recruitment efforts, 108 employees signed early contracts prior to July 1, not just commitment letters, but early contracts this year prior to July 1, with an additional 123 signing prior to the start, start of the school year. The Department of Human Resources also began offering long-term substitute memorandums of understanding starting on July 24th. And as stated earlier, that way we could allow all of our long-term subs who are under contract to start with us early with the new teacher institute and have some professional development this year. And that filled over 66% of the jobs so that vacancies can continue to be filled on a rolling basis throughout the year. And while recruitment is an important component of HR's mission, equally important is the commitment to retention. And for the school, school year, um, coming into school year 23-24, NPS retained 87.6% of its teacher workforce, which is a slight increase from last year. This retention rate remains higher than the national average for urban city school divisions, which is around 82%. And our internal data still reveals that while teachers have elected to leave NPS, the number of teachers who leave NPS for another local school division has decreased again since last year.
I'll clap to that.
They're not stealing him as much. Moving into multi-tiered, multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS continues to be implemented across the division. Systems coaching for consistent implementation of school-based MTSS teams with a focus on attendance, social emotional needs, behavioral intervention and academic supports. The implementation of additional screeners and interventions to include an athletics mental health screener app, an SEL universal screener for students in all K-12 classrooms with aligned classroom lessons, and a warm handoff mental health referral system has also been added for this year. There is a continuation of supports within counseling, PBIS, after-school activities and the use of the Wellness Champions at all of our schools. And to create a coherence for systemic change, increased expectations for observations in tier-one instruction settings have been developed. And these focus on instructional practice and classroom systems and management. Principals also focus on using data to provide proactive interventions to monitor progress for their tier-two and tier-three supports. The use of mentoring from retired, highly effective principals will remain in place this year to support some of our principals. It is now my pleasure to be able to go get a drink of water and to introduce Principal Lawrence from Northside Middle School, who will share what she's done this year, and prefer this year, and then following her will be Principal Boone. Ms. Lawrence?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to get applause and not ask for them. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong and members of our board. I'm grateful to stand before you to briefly highlight and share a few things planned this year in the areas of professional development, scheduling and family engagement based upon Northside's data as we continue our drive for excellence, excellence and equity for everyone, no matter what. Do I need to hold the clicker? All right. Internal joke. This year we have included collaborative planning with the general education, special education and GRT teachers that's built into our master schedule. We recognize that we still have work to do. Where possible, long-term substitute placement is with elective courses instead of in the core areas. We have established a mentor-mentee relationship that includes our long-term substitutes working alongside veteran teachers. According to our synergy report, 721, we have 721 active students in our school. And 104 of our families have listed Spanish as the primary language spoken at home. Because of this, we've been fortunate enough to add bilingual staff members to our team, specifically in the areas of science and in history. Northside Middle is currently supported by four university tutors and reading and math tutors also. Additionally, our gifted resource teacher is reviewing data and working with our honor classes to assist with planning to ensure rigorous instruction and to provide push-in, pull-out support. In the area of professional development, we conducted data meetings with the core areas to do a deep SOL data drive. We used a 60-plus, 60-minus-40 metric for each member of the team. Each member identified their performance on each assessed standard. If all members of the team earned 60 points or 60-plus percentages, the team referred to previous plans on how the standard was taught and other indicators such as CFA and DBA data that mirrored mastery. If 40% was earned, again, the team referred to prior lesson plans to identify lesson delivery to include review of cognitive alignment. As teams move through the curriculum, they will include prior mastery. Though curriculum, excuse me, through curriculum and instruction, we have participated in professional development on the implementation of NPS's literacy plan, the integrated reading and writing assessment, No Red Ink, Lexia, Desmos and Edmentum. Additionally, recognizing our struggles with literacy, internally, our team has planned many PD sessions for writing conferences, providing feedback using video and using model texts with the support of our UI and reading tutors. Also to target our performance of students with disabilities in literacy, Northside will be participating in the Strategic Instruction Model PD focusing on sentence writing. We reduced our chronic absenteeism from 20.64%, according to the School Quality Report. And our preliminary data suggests that we have attained 16.221%. We are still continuing our efforts to earn to go green by utilizing the Chronic Absentee E-Learning Series and adjusting our attendance team protocols. The E-Learning Series is through VDOE. In the area of family and community engagement, we know that relationships are an essential component to student achievement and success. Our efforts to continue to build an active and model PTA, increasing opportunities for our parents to be present within the building for academic reasons like parent-teacher conferences, open house, meet and greets, parent workshops and fun engagements like sporting events for our Hispanic Heritage Month events as well as Northside's Got Talent. This will include students and parents. Last year, we were able to partner with some area businesses for teacher appreciation and we recognized them via our website, our newsletter and our school marquee. Their contributions to our school are enormous. Each year we are expanding our digital footprint and working to build a stronger bridge to high school for our students by pattering operations practices to better prepare our students for success in high school. At this time, I present another voice from the field, Ms. Shakita Boone, Principal of Richard Bowling Elementary.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Birdsong. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to stand before you to share the strategies and structures we have in place at Richard Bowling, where we are raising the bar for excellence, no matter what. In order to determine our focus for the year, I met with our instructional leadership team to analyze our data. We reviewed our SOL, PALS, VKRP, attendance and disciplined end-of-the-year data. We disaggregated the data by subjects from various perspectives. We looked at it based on school-wide, grade level, gap groups, classroom, and then down to our individual students. We then created goals for each that aligned with our CSEP. On pre-service week, we presented this data and the school-wide goals to the teachers and had them create grade-level goals, which will be hung on their hallway. The teachers will then create their student academic progress goals in talent ed. We will also have students create goals based on their individual data and monitor the progress towards their goals throughout the school year in their student data books. By disaggregating, or as we call it, walking our data down, we were able to determine trends, patterns and/or gaps that helped us to narrow our focus for professional development and our SOL family nights. As well as properly align our human and capital resources and to create our master schedule with intentionality. I would share more about these. As we walked our data down, oh, I probably need to turn the slide. I'm sorry. Oh, you got it? There you go. Thank you. Here we go. Okay, I'm back. As we walked our data down, we were able to notice trends, patterns and/or gaps from the school-wide perspective down to individual students. We were able to define our areas of improvement, create a differentiated professional development plan based on the data, identify the students who need additional support and the content areas of support is needed in, and to determine what supports we may need from our curriculum and instruction and Student Support Services Department. Our master schedule was created to intentionally ensure that our sped inclusion teachers are able to provide SDI to students in the two grade levels they service without an overlap in the content areas scheduled times. This, the same holds, holds true for our building-level instructional support team. None of our grade levels have reading and math at the same time. This helps in ensuring students are, are able to get small group support as needed. We are also able to meet the time expectations of the district for specific content areas while adding additional time based on what.
while adding additional time based on what our data suggests. While analyzing our data, we are also able to determine how we would begin aligning our human and capital resources. We have two university instructors this year who have already, who already have a schedule of classrooms to support and students based on our data needs. We have also determined where our instructional support team would be needed initially and what resources we need to purchase based on our data data. At Richard Bowlin Elementary School, we have monthly family SOL nights that have already been scheduled. Our objective focus per grade level is dictated by our end-of-the-year data. We will continue analyzing our data to determine our needs and make adjustments when necessary. However, at this point, I feel that we are off to a great start of continuing to raise the bar for excellence, no matter what.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. I know you, both principals have had such a long day, and I really appreciate your patience with us this evening. Thank you.
And I'd like to again thank Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Boone for sharing and being out here tonight, and thank you to the board for allowing us this time to share the back-to-school updates. We stand ready for any questions or discussion you may have. Hearing done, I'm ready to go to the next one.
Anyone? Yeah, go ahead.
So, in the, earlier, I think it was in Slide Five, you talked about instructional or curriculum updates, instructional updates, I think it was. So, how did you know what updates needed to be done and what would have the greatest impact? So, how did you know what updates needed to be done and what would have the greatest impact in producing improved outcomes?
So, the data told us where we needed, where we looked at our standards, where we were weakest, and research-based practices is where we leaned on, especially when we look at literacy and, like when we shared the literacy plan, that, you know, we're focusing on what does research say works and how do we integrate that where our weaker spots are. And we did that in collaboration with teachers across the division. So, there were actually, we have an annual budget that includes paying teachers for curriculum development over the summer, and Mr. Brady and his team utilize that and sometimes a little bit more, he comes knocking on my door, so we can make sure we have as much teacher input as possible.
Anyone else?
You didn't have like a curriculum audit or anything like that?
So, we've had curriculum audits, and we've used feedback from the audits in the past as well, so, but really, when it comes down to it, the heart of it comes down to the data every single summer. We realign our unit assessments, we realign what the formative assessments look like in the curriculum to make sure that we're hitting the spots that the data say we need to hit.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
So, I ask the questions of you, Dr. Paul, even though they're specific to Northside and Richard Bowlin, and you all can figure out how you want to deal with it. So, one of the things that I appreciated about, you all know, I try to look at these school improvement plans. So, at Richard Bowlin, with Principal Boone, she has a goal for all students in reading, and the goal was for all students to go from 74 to 75%. Then, for gap groups, it had where the students were and then how they would get to 75% in a year. So, to me, based upon the conversation we were having earlier, it is as though, at least at a school level, she found a way, and her team found a way, to say what the overarching goal was, but then also show goals for each gap group that in order for the individual gap group to get to the 75, they had to have a higher number than the others. And so, I just, based upon the conversation that we were having earlier, is that a way of, from a board perspective, looking at the district as a whole in the conversation we were having, is that one way that we could look at our goals? I think because we were trying to look at it district-wide, we were using percentages and points and so forth, is there a way to take the simplicity that Richard Bowlin has done with their goal and SMART goals and for us to learn something from that for our discussion?
Okay.
And I directed that to you because I didn't know if it was appropriate to direct it.
So, I would direct it back to how Dr. Birdsong presented the gap data. When we looked at the numbers, we looked at five percentage points of where we were and moving it up. That was faster than the gap would have closed. So, we realized that we want to close the gap, right? But if, let's say, the black population versus the white population, if they moved up 5% each, each for the four years, the white population would be at 101%. They're not, that's not possible. So, we knew the calculations we gave were how we're going to close that gap. The other way to look at it, and I'll say my belief, but I think our belief, is the way we presented the strategic plan. So, over time, we're looking at that gap to decrease to 10% or below, because that's how you monitor your gaps, is how are you bringing those gaps closer while still holding the expectations high for everybody? I think those are difficult to track, because the one thing we don't know is how's the white subgroup going to score next year? So, the only way to track that is to say that it's going to be like, the white subgroup scores X, the black subgroup scores X plus .05X to get the 5% growth of X, because we don't know those numbers. But we knew, and to be quite honest, it was fearful when we were sitting in the room to say, we're going to do 5% a year, because that's a big jump. We haven't seen jumps like that in the division, and we know that jump will cause the improvements that we need and close our gaps, because our Asian and white population gaps that are, remain our highest, they can't possibly grow that fast. And that's why we put that calculation in, instead of 5%, because we knew then, we wouldn't even reach a 75% goal for black students in reading at that point. So, yes, I think we could learn from that, and I think looking at the percent, the percentage point increase, as aggressive as what it's been planned, I don't think Dr. Birdsong would have presented it if her and her team didn't believe that's the way to go.
Yeah, no, I just, again, I wasn't going back to questioning that. I just liked, it was just easy, as a non educator, as a parent, I could, I could easily see what the expectation was. And so, as we've talked about, trying to have our goals and our conversations at a level that's...
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
Right.
Then, it was, it's easy to see and to follow.
Right, and that's...
And that was the context in which I was asking, asking the question.
And my apologies for interrupting, but that is also why we put the division average on the bottom of the charts, so that we could see what is the gap to the division average, because that's also a gap we're trying to close, right? The rising tide lifts everybody.
Right. And then, my question related to Northside and Principal Lawrence and the work that she's doing, her team are doing on professional development, is there a way to see the effectiveness of the professional development and how it impacts their goals that they've established?
So, I, we have an answer for that, because one of the things that we're really focused on with professional development across the division and a part of our professional development plan is that we preemptively approach it with principals. So, since we didn't have a principals' meeting except for SLI in August, we sent a detailed memo to all principals saying in September, here's what teachers are learning and what you should expect to see in the classroom. And the focus was on formative assessment and using the data for small-group instruction. So, principals now know when they're in classrooms, they're looking for this, to make sure that that professional learnings get implemented. Our next Professional Learning Day for teachers is end of October. So, in September's principals' meeting, we're going to have detailed information about what's going on there, so there's much more accountability of implementation, and that's how we're tracking to make sure that that's improving classroom learning.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that they both found ways to have goals that I could understand. So, I appreciate that.
Come back with that plus and minus 10, Mr. Jordan.
No.
That's what we really wanted.
If you can explain it to me.
You understand.
No, no, seriously, it, but, well, it was hard for me, but I understand students with disabilities being at this and going to that. I can follow that.
Any other questions for Dr. Paul? Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Okay, up next, we have the...
BTW.
Booker T. Washington feasibility study update.
I did gain an extra pen up here. I don't know if one of the principals left it.
They are, they are the best pens.
DTW, task force?
Yes.
Okay.
All righty. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this time to present updates on the STEAM programming for Booker T. Washington High School. During the May 17th board meeting, as you're obviously all well aware of, you guys voted for it to add a STEAM program to the already-established fine arts, fine and performing arts program at Booker T. Washington High School. STEAM consists of a concentration around science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. Additionally, as a part of the motion, the board presented programming offerings to include enhanced performance, visual multimedia arts, audiovisual communications technology, cybersecurity, entrepreneurship, and hospitality, with the guidance that programs are to begin being phased in, beginning with the 24, 25 school year. This approved addition is in direct alignment with the vision strategic plan, continuing the drive equity and excellence for all, within the goal of student excellence to create authentic and culturally relevant learning experiences so that each student will be creative, collaborative, civic-minded, critical thinker with effective communication skills, and that's where it's primarily aligned within Objective Three. STEAM education is an approach to learning that uses science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics as access points for guiding student inquiry, dialogue, and critical thinking. Using STEAM education results in students who take thoughtful risks and engage in experiential learning, persistent problem-solving, embrace collaboration, and work through the creative process. STEAM is an integrated approach to learning which requires an intentional connection between standards, assessments, and lesson, lesson design implementation, and true STEAM experiences involve two or more standards from science, technology, engineering, math, and the arts to be taught and assessed in and through each other. Inquiry, collaboration, and emphasis on process-based learning are at the heart of the STEAM approach, and utilizing this leverage, the integrity of the arts themselves is essential to an authentic STEAM initiative. I'd like to share three main benefits of STEAM education with you. First, our future relies on new solutions to help the people and the planet. As humanity faces increasing change, challenges, and complexity, we need people with the ability to ask the right questions and find new solutions. STEAM, with its focus on not only the how and the what, but also the who and the why, is specifically designed to develop future innovators. Next, the STEAM education prepares students for an ever-changing workforce. As we enter the innovation revolution, educators must prepare for students for many jobs that don't even exist yet. Automation will gradually take, be taken over by repetitive tasks, up to 30% of tasks and 60% of jobs. But there's no substitute for human ingenuity and creativity, and humans will need to take on jobs that require creativity, critical thinking, and the ability to solve novel problems and the core foundational skills that are addressed by STEAM. Finally, it engages students in learning. Many students have greater aptitude and affinity for either the arts and humanities or mathematics and science. STEAM education, with its integrated and holistic approach, helps students conceptualize these disciplines as parts of the greater whole, rather than feeling aligned or tuned out of certain subjects. They can now collaborate with others to solve problems and see subjects they struggle with in a different way. The STEAM program will be a school-wide program where all students will choose the pathway, beginning with next year's entering ninth-grade program. Did I miss a slide here?
Yeah.
Well, yes, we'll choose, so they'll choose a pathway with next year's rising ninth-grade class. Some of the possible pathways include the following. Under multimedia arts, they may choose to focus on two-dimensional or three-dimensional art, mixed media, product management, or production management, sound and lighting design, stage design, or costume design. The hospitality, they may study culinary or hospitality entrepreneurship, travel, tourism, recreation and lodging management, or digital and social media management. With performing arts, they may choose theater, theater tech, dance, or music. Audiovisual communications may include digital visualization and technology, audio production and recording, entertainment design and technology. For entrepreneurship, students can choose to be in the incubator program and to complete in business startup challenges. And finally, for cybersecurity, they may focus on cybersecurity, networking, or programming and gaming. To build the new program, there will be a transitional timeline, starting with the entering ninth graders for the fall of 2024. That class will have their core classes scheduled alongside electives within their chosen pathway, and the core classes will have integrated assignments connected to their pathway to reinforce learning across content and interests. Starting in the fall of 2025, ninth and 10th grade students will be a part of the STEAM program, with the addition of Level Two classes within their assigned pathways. Then, with the start of the 26, 27 school year, the addition of dual enrollment opportunities, as well as more in-depth classes offered at the Norfolk Technical Center, would become options within each pathway. As the pathways grow over time, increased course offerings will be housed at Booker T. Washington High School as well. Finally, the 27, 28 school year will be the first year with a full school of students within the STEAM program. This will include the addition of work experiences for our students as well, with the overall goal of producing graduates who are college-ready with dual enrollment credits and career-ready with career certifications. In an effort to gain insight from the community, a survey and community meeting were conducted. The survey window was from July 19th through September 29th, and the survey information was posted on all social media channels and sent through the email, telephone, robocalls to make the public aware. As of September 29th, there were 39 responses. As seen on this slide, the majority of responses were from community members outside the school attendance zone, without students attending the school. There were 31 of 39 responses that were not in the attendant zone. However, 17 of the responses identified themselves as NPS parents and 16 as teachers, and please note, the respondents were able to choose multiple answers to this question. 56.4% of the respondents identified themselves as black or African-American, and 35.9% as white, within the remaining spread across other demographics. 92.3% of the responses showed the desire to open the program to be a citywide program for any student to attend. And when asked to rank the order of preference for programming within STEAM, cybersecurity was the top-ranked, followed by audiovisual, then entrepreneurship, performing arts, multimedia arts, then last was hospitality. Like golf, the low score wins when you're ranking in this one. Most respondents left a comment on the survey, ranging from continuing to grow the arts program, to supporting the STEAM concept, to being listened to, and to matching the program to the employment needs of the community. Some of the concerns were around the placement of the program at Booker T. Washington High School, wanting to also make sure there'd be room for all students, and the need for renovations and for the courses to be challenging and account for college credit, if possible, which we already mentioned, we do want dual enrollment as a major part of this program. During the community meeting in July, feedback was received on connecting with Norfolk State and the cybersecurity department, which have already started to make those connections, matching the Norfolk economic profile to meet the demand for open jobs in our locality to meet some of the certifications offered, the need to create a legacy museum to honor the school's history, and to make sure the program is for all students, and the need to support teachers with the professional development and students with mental health supports. To continue moving the program forward, a committee's been developed to begin the creation of the STEAM programming, to include the current programming, to visit exemplar STEAM schools, and to gather additional student and teacher feedback, as we saw those numbers were low earlier. The work will progress to developing a draft of the program concept and to gather further community input. In December, a draft implementation plan will be developed to include the application process, and building specification planning will be completed with HPA. And in January, a recommendation will be presented to the board for further review. Thanks for allowing me the time to give you an update on where we are right now, and we stand ready for questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Klein.
All right, thank you, Dr. Paul, and the information here. I think several of my colleagues attended the, the community meeting that was held there, and I think that the comments that we're seeing, even in the survey here, kind of reflect that. I just wanted to be clear on a couple of things here, and the motion that was made. We have changed the name of Booker T. Washington High School, and it's going to be the STEAM High School there, so it's still, of course, Booker T. Washington. It's all in a book, it's Booker T. Washington.
That's right.
STEAM High School. But that, we further directed you and the administration to come up with a comprehensive curriculum and programs, okay, that are STEM-related, and that's what I think these possible pathways are in there. So, it's a STEAM high school with these programs, and then we also talked... And then we also talked about making it citywide, wanting to get that feedback in there, and I think that that's reflective. Also, just for clarity here, you gave them a timeline, because we'll start next school year with the freshman year, and then each year we're adding on, so that by 2027, 2028, we're complete by, with everything there. Dual enrollment, I mean, everything that we've talked about in the respect of our graduate will have that opportunity. And then, of course, at the same time, we've got the feasibility study that's going on with the physical structure of the building, which we went through a whole long discussion. With this now, with the administration's doing and advising the curriculum, that will also drive what we need in the classroom, in the building. We'll address that. So, am I tracking right?
You are.
Okay. So, the only thing, I had a couple of things. So when I got down and looked at some of these things, so Level Two classes align with the class, with the pathways. And to me, it kind of seems like education jargon, just for plain, what does that mean?
Sure. So, the gist of this timeline is, when a ninth grader comes in next year, they'll choose a pathway, and their electives will match that pathway.
Got it.
And then their second year, they maintain the pathway, it's more in-depth in that same pathway. So, right now, a student might come in, and let's say that they come in and they take culinary as a freshman. And then the next year, they go and they're going to take, well, you know what, I'm going to take course instead of culinary. And they might bounce to different areas. Here, we're going to more pathway center it, so we can go more in-depth and connect it across.
And so when we talk about the connect it with the core classes, are we also looking at a, I think, because I know I brought this up before, I think we're starting to do some of this. So if someone's taking a cybersecurity course, that their core classes in the curriculum and the lesson planning will reflect and support with their learning in their specialty program. So in other words, their history may have a little bit more cybersecurity history, or some things that are, or their math will be related. Is that something that we can anticipate?
So what you'll anticipate, what you'll see, are their, like, their performance assessments. Their connection to the curriculum will be through their pathway. So you won't necessarily, especially early on, you won't see a teacher teaching English for cybersecurity only, because we wouldn't have the staffing for that. However, that English would be taught, and then within a performance assessment, or a paper that would be written, or a research paper, it would be pathway-focused for the student to bring that into the classroom. And same with other subject areas.
Oh, yes, integration.
It's integrated.
It's integrated, but ultimately, it's a bigger plan to get to a point where you can literally get that, kind of that track level of really in-depth and immerse the student. So that, this is where I'm going on a pathway, to keep my interests, let me see the end goal in mind, really continue to build that around that.
Right.
I mean, this is not, I'm not saying it's going to happen tomorrow, but I'm saying that would be maybe the ultimate goal.
I think ultimately, based on the size, the real size, because again, when you have a high school that's 1,000 students, it's hard to have a ton of electives, because you don't have the enrollment or the staffing for it. But ultimately, depending on the size and the focus of the pathways, so all the possible pathways we may have, those may not all come to fruition, because there may not be as much interest in all of them. So if it narrows the scope down, then there's more possibility for that. But if we do have 16 pathways, we can't have 16 different sections of English nine to match the pathway. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
So to piggyback on Mr. Clanton's question, so you could, if, so you could have interest, because it sounds like there was a lot of interest in it being a citywide program. So if you're planning to have a real, authentic cybersecurity program with it being resourced as a cybersecurity pathway, with it not just being integrated, where they're doing, you know, research, or it being, you know, with somebody who's really an expert in it, or we're utilizing, you know, NSU, and, you know, you maybe have a professor that can come over and teach a class, or somehow, you know, we're partnering with them, or students are able to go over there. I think that would generate a whole lot of interest from kids from around the city. So I think it's how you, how you plan it, market it, and, you know, so I guess that's the question I have, is, so are we, the interest is there, it sounds like, based on the survey results, to be citywide? And then the question is...
So I...
You know?
Small sample size.
It's a very small sample size. So my, I mean, my question is, are we going to increase that sample size by really, now that school's back in session? I mean, doing a survey in the summertime, you know, is hard, anytime, doing a survey anytime is hard, but especially in the summer. Are we, I guess, what's the plan in really...
We have, I want to look at it in two ways, Ms. Bassin, and I appreciate the question being asked. So as stated in the timeline, we're definitely going to go and get student and teacher feedback, because they're back in school.
Yeah.
Especially from Booker T. Washington, because that, the most affected student is going to be a Booker T. Washington High School student, and the middle schools that feed to Booker T. Washington High School.
Absolutely.
My worry about starting off citywide is when we come to the board in January with the final program, which there is no feasible way we can come before January and have an effective program.
Sure, definitely.
We've missed the start of applications for our specialty programs already.
Yep.
And so, coming to January, vote late January, February timeline already, I think with time, building it to a citywide program is the right thing to do. That's the phased-in approach part.
Absolutely.
I believe for the 24, 25 school year, we're looking at amazing bookers that are choosing some pathways, give us the proper time to build this out.
Agreed.
And I think with time, yes, it is going to be something, we're talking about dual enrollment each way, too, and it's, it's, we're looking at something really special, but to do it right, we need to take that slow phased-in approach as we go, to get to the point of utopia where we have this pathway that's all cybersecurity, and your history relates to it, your English relates to it, we have, you know, you're going to Norfolk State and TCC, you know, we're building those relationships now, so over time, we have that, because it's deserving of Booker T. Washington High School.
Absolutely. And I just know, I completely agree with that, I don't want to do anything half-assed, but I'm just...
I knew you had it in you.
Halfway, halfway.
Me, too. It's very good.
What happens when we go over the agenda time?
The flag won't be at half mast, it's going to be at full mast.
Halfway.
Pushing it, pushing it.
Halfway, I don't want to, I don't want to do anything halfway. But I mean, within that timeline, we're just, you know, that would be part of the plan, that we do things completely, and, you know, that be part of the plan, especially with our specialty programs, as we really strengthen all of our specialty programs to be, you know, modernized and relatable and relevant to, you know, fields of study. So I'm really looking forward to that. But, you know, I just wanted to know next steps in terms of expanding that...
Small steps to get into it.
Small steps, yeah.
To make it right. I know when, when we met as a committee, and there were some curriculum folks on that committee, as well as some school leadership, and we talked the pie in the sky of where we want this to be, I had to hand out paper bags so they didn't hyper-balance. I mean, literally, the stress in that room. And then when we talked, let's focus on ninth grade, and let's focus on Booker T., we have time to do that, and we can, and we will, and with time, I envisioned going through almost four years and then making it citywide, and making sure it's what Booker T. Washington needs, and then opening it up wide. May happen sooner, but right now, that's the phased-in, because in four years, we have a full curriculum in place, and then we can branch out more and know really what is successful and what's not successful at that point.
My apologies, I'm sorry.
Do you want to respond?
I did want to respond, if that's okay. And we also talked about potentially hiring a contractor who has expertise in STEAM, so that we can really make sure that the program is robust, and we're thinking through all of these pieces. We're definitely going to need someone to do that, to assist us with that, especially with this very aggressive timeline.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
I was just going to offer support for that approach. One, I wanted to agree with Mr. Clanton in terms of the, the school is a STEAM school that also has an academy for performing arts, and, which is a citywide specialty.
Right.
That we are committed to seeing it grow in its excellence. So we've already got one citywide focus there that we are committed to see grow in excellence, and I think the approach of being focused on that, while also building in the system, the school-wide STEAM curriculum, is important. I appreciate that. The other thing, I know on one of the slides, it referenced the relationship with Norfolk State and cybersecurity. I know we talked about it, but I think there's a lot more, you know, engineering, there's a ton of stuff there. And I just happened to finally clean out my back room and came across a brochure from Norfolk State in 2012, 2013, and just had all these different, the Saturday Scientists Academy, and all this stuff that they have there, and that was 10 years ago, and it's only grown, that we don't lose sight of that as collaboration, not just Norfolk State. Norfolk State is important because of its proximity.
Correct.
But Old Dominion, Virginia, we have...
But TCC's close as well.
Yes, right. We have a plethora of higher ed institutions we can leverage. And then, just to the survey piece, I know at the community meeting, and I think at previous community meetings, alumni are well-represented, but I do think we have to find ways to be more intentional about how do we get the future, the current and the future represented, in terms of in the room.
I agree.
And so if there's anything that we can do to be supportive of that, I know we would make ourselves available to help them with that, if we can.
Alright.
Anyone else?
Yes, you don't want policies?
Uh, yeah, that's up next.
No, we already said, no, you go.
But is there anything, anything of substance with the policies, other than, you know, the legal referencing?
I just had one point of clarity, so, and I think I sent this email, and I may have missed it, but whatever it was that Attorney Cloud had emailed us about, is that in this group, or is that still under development?
Still under development.
Okay.
Still under development. There are, there are a few that have some lengthy changes on them, the policies. Most of them are pretty straightforward changes, though. And some of them you've heard, because they're attached to other policies as well. I just want to make sure there's nothing...
The bully one, is the bullying reporting one?
Bullying, the bullying is on here, which we already have procedures in place, because that law went in place July 1. It's just the policy changes in here to do that. I will say the AUP adds, the AUP is now going to add language around applications that include TikTok, WeChat, and etc. TikTok. I might need one. As well as software companies that...
They're getting late.
Yeah, it sure is.
It's late, yeah.
And then, IKEB, there's no changes to that at all. There was a regulation added for IKEB, though, so, because it wasn't in place right now. And, other than that, I mean, when you read them, they're very straightforward changes, all of them are. There's nothing that's a red flag, kind of a change in the policies, this go-round.
And just for clarity, was it said earlier, these are first, these are not for September 24, or they are for September?
They are.
Okay, they are for September 24. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Thank you. One other thing, just person-to-person privilege, I just wanted to make sure, Dr. Birdsong, so we're set for Friday for the, for the meeting?
What do you mean, set for Friday?
For the meeting with the congressman, we're set for Friday, right?
I've shared with the board that I'm not available. I copied the whole board on that.
No, I'm just saying, do we have a representative?
I haven't designated anybody to go at this time, no, I haven't.
Are you going?
I will be there.
It's in Newport News, right?
It is, but I will be going as a Norfolk school board member.
Okay, great.
Oh, okay.
But we, the school board members got invited?
They did, superintendent of the school board. So I know a lot of superintendents aren't going.
Well, I know that Chesapeake and Newport News and Hampton are going.
Board members?
Superintendent.
Oh, superintendent, right.
And other staff members.
It is in Newport News.
Yeah. So, I won't belabor on that one. I just want to make sure that we're, as Norfolk Public Schools, or just Urban School Division, we're represented at these discussions.
Yeah, and I support that, I mean, that's...
I do, too. I know we've attended before, many times.
Well, I can send out the information if you, yeah.
I would like that, okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you, everyone, for a wonderful meeting, and please be safe driving home, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay.